Evening Commissioners. Get started here. Alright, so this evening for work session, we'll just go over the agenda for this evening. So we'll have minutes from May 3rd and May 10th will be on consent. I think only other, a couple of other items for consent this evening. Letter A, number A is a time extension. There's not, this is in a public hearing, so we'll just place that on consent. Number one is an annexation on Pleasant Valley Road. We are recommending approval. There has been neighborhood opposition received. We didn't have anyone sign up in advance, but we will have to hear the item. Feel free to interrupt if you've got questions. Number two, PD 21-15 on Idaho Streets, a PUD for 48 multifamily units. We are recommending approval. There's been neighborhood opposition. We will hear from the Neighborhood Association tonight, but we haven't had anyone sign up. Number three, CP for 35-foot tall wireless communication facility on Awaki, CP 21-15. We're recommending approval. There's some neighborhood opposition, and we do have a list of folks signed up. So we will be hearing that one tonight. Number four, CFH 20-78, an appeal for hillside permit. We are recommending denial of the appeal. We've been made aware that the appellant might not be able to show up tonight, so we will still have to hear it, but it will probably be a quick item this evening. Number five, CP 21-14, CP for an addition on 8th Street. We are recommending approval. We haven't heard of any opposition, so we can try for consent. Number six, CAR 21-14 and sub 21-20 on Overland for Box Elder Creek subdivision. We are recommending approval. The applicant is opposed to a condition. And so we expect to hear that one. We don't have anyone signed up at this time. Number seven, CP 21-21 is on Victory Road, is a CP for outdoor storage. We are recommending approval. We're not aware of any opposition, so we can try for consent. Number eight, PUD 21-11 on Eustick, PUD for 40 multifamily units. We are recommending approval. There is neighborhood opposition with a few signups this evening, so we will hear that one. Number nine, CVA 21-12, a variance on Skylark. We are recommending approval. There is some neighborhood opposition. Although we didn't have anyone sign up in advance, so we will hear that one. We'll just keep going. Number 10, CR 21-16 and PUD 21-12 on Linda Vista. Rezone and a PUD for eight multifamily units. We are recommending approval. The applicant is opposed to some conditions, and there is neighborhood opposition. No one signed up in advance, but we will have to hear that one. Number 11, CAA 21-40. It's an appeal of director's approval for a childcare. We are recommending denial of the appeal. I believe it's just the applicant and the appellant. No one signed up in advance, but we will have to hear that. Number 12, PUD 21-13, a CP, or excuse me, a PUD for 48 multifamily units on Franklin Road. We are recommending approval. We're not aware of any opposition, so we can try for consent. Number 13, CAR 21-15, a rezone on Ash Creek. We are recommending approval. There's neighborhood opposition. We do have a few folks signed up, so we will have to hear that one. Number 14, CP 21-24, modification to add an accessory dwelling unit on 18th Street. We are recommending approval. There was neighborhood opposition. No one signed up in advance, but we will have to hear that one. Number 15, PUD 21-14 is a PUD for 24 attached single-family homes on Boise Avenue. We're recommending approval. There is neighborhood opposition. And we do have a couple of folks signed up, so we'll be hearing that one. And lastly, number 16, CVA 21-15, a variance on Vermont Avenue for parking in the street-side setback. We are recommending approval. We're not aware of any opposition, so we can try for consent. So in summary, we've got letter A. Number five, number seven. Number 12. Number 16, that we can try for consent. Just, and I guess a reminder, we weren't able to hold our hearing last week because noticing from the Statesman did not go out in time, so we had to defer for everything to tonight. I, I, I think we probably won't get through everything to tonight, and we certainly don't want to make this a 2:00 AM hearing, so we will likely need to defer items this evening. My hopes is that we can stop, well, we'll take our hourly break, of course, and that we can around 9:00 o'clock make a call of how many more items we want to get through this evening. And then whatever items we don't think we're going to get to, we can defer at that time, just so folks don't have to wait that much later. And we will defer items to July 12th. Any questions? We will start back up at 6:00. Thanks, guys. Nine to raise your hand. Each member of the public is allowed up to three minutes for testimony. We are strict with this time as it is limited in code, and we do have several items on tonight's agenda. Finally, the applicant is allowed five minutes for rebuttal, after which the hearing will be closed and the commission will deliberate and render a decision. Tonight's agenda and proceedings might have a bit of a delay as we navigate through the technology and in-person attendees. Please be courteous and kind while we venture through this hybrid format. Madam Chair, you have the floor.
Thank you, Saleen. We are citizen volunteers appointed by the mayor and approved by the city council. We make final decisions on conditional use permits, variances, and appeals, and recommendations to the city council on subdivisions, rezones, annexations, and code or comprehensive plan amendments. Any decision made tonight may be appealed to the city council, provided that the appeal is filed within 10 days of this hearing. In order to file an appeal, you must have given written or oral testimony at tonight's meeting. So that's why it's important that you give your name and address when you testify tonight. We utilize a consent agenda. This means that if the applicant agrees with the staff report, and if there is no public opposition, the item will be placed on the consent agenda. All items that are placed on the consent agenda are approved with one motion without further public comment. For items not on the consent agenda, we will hold a full public hearing in the order just detailed a few minutes ago with staff, the applicant, Neighborhood Association, and then the public testimony. Thank you all for attending tonight, and will the clerk please call the roll?
Stan.
Here.
Schaefer.
Here.
Blanchard.
Here.
Moore.
Here.
Benfro.
Here.
Yanley.
Here.
Six present, two absent.
Great. And without, without objection from the commission, we will place the minutes from our May 3rd, 2021, and May 10th, 2021 meetings onto the consent agenda. The next item for consideration of the consent agenda is PUD 19-4 for Baby Doll Capital LLC. This is a time extension deferred from the June 7th, 2021 hearing. This item does not require a public hearing, so without objection from the commission, I will place item A on the consent agenda. The next item for consideration of the consent agenda is item number five. This is CP 21-14 for BRS Architects, deferred from June 7th, 2021. 818 North 8th Street. This is a conditional use permit for an approximate 450 square foot addition to a non-conforming use. Is the applicant present? If you're present online, please virtually raise your hand. Great, I see you. Curtis, and are you in agreement with the terms and conditions of the staff report? I think once you are unmuted.
Yes, we are in agreement with the conditions.
Great, thank you. And is there anybody present to testify in opposition of item number five tonight? Please virtually raise your hand, or do so in person if you're here. Okay, seeing none, then item five will be placed on the consent agenda. The next item is item number seven. This is CP 21-21. Eldon, oh, this is Fattick, deferred from June 7th, 2021. 6812 West Victory Road. This is a conditional use permit for outdoor storage. Is the applicant present? And are you in agreement with the terms and conditions of the staff report? Great, let the record show that they are. And is there anybody present tonight to testify in opposition of this item? Please virtually raise your hand or hear in person. Okay, seeing none, item seven will be placed on the consent agenda. Next item for consideration is item 12. This is PUD 21-13 for Franklin Spokane LLC. At 5500 West Franklin Road, conditional use permit for a planned residential development comprised of 48 multifamily units. Is the applicant present? Hello there, and are you in agreement with the terms and conditions of the staff report?
Yes, we are.
Thank you. And is there anybody present to testify in opposition of this item tonight? Okay, seeing none, item 12 will be placed on the consent agenda. And the last item for consideration is item 16. This is CVA 21-15 for Hatch Design Architecture at 1200 South Vermont Avenue. It's a variance to encroach the street-side setback. Is the applicant present? And are you in agreement with the terms and conditions of the staff report? Thank you. Let the record show that they are. Is there anybody present to testify in opposition of this item tonight? Please virtually or in person, raise your hand. Okay, seeing none, item 16 will be placed on the consent agenda. And the chair will entertain a motion.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Schaefer.
I move to approve the following items on the consent agenda. The meeting minutes from May 3rd and May 10th, 2021. Item A. Item five. Item seven. Item 12. And item 16. With all the terms and conditions as written in the staff reports.
Second.
Great, a second from Commissioner Moore. And if there is no discussion, will the clerk please call the vote?
Stan.
Aye.
Schaefer.
Aye.
Blanchard.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
Benfro.
Aye.
Yanley.
Aye.
All in favor, motion carries.
Okay, great. First item up is item number one. This is CAR 21-13, 13 for BVA Development, deferred from June 7th, 2021 at 6259 South Pleasant Valley Road. This is an annexation of 121 acres with zoning designations of C1D and M1D. We will start with staff. Please go ahead, Miss Saleen.
Yes, sorry, I'm not Cody Riddle tonight. Madam Chair, Commissioners, the first item this evening is for an annexation of approximately 121 acres in the southwest near the intersection of Lake Hazel and Orchard. The property is bounded on three sides by city limits, so the extension of services would be minimal since water, sewer, and emergency services are already provided nearby. The land use designation for the site is industrial, and upon annexation, 102 acres would be designated M1D, light industrial with design review, and 19 acres at C1D, neighborhood commercial with design review. A development agreement would apply to the entire site. The annexation was requested in anticipation of a sizable industrial park with potentially, or with potential for nearly 1 million square feet of usable space. Lake Hazel would be extended in the southeast, and the commercial zoning would be, provide additional services to the area, as well as transition and zoning to the Seringa Valley Development to the west. As noted in the report, the development agreement includes additional conditions, such as providing a more detailed phasing plan, so a more accurate traffic impact study may be conducted, and right-of-way can be dedicated appropriately, and that a fire station be dedicated before Phase 2 starts. While these are very important details to work through, you can imagine with the size of property that these things take time, and not every detail is in place yet. Having a phased approach within these conditions provide assurances to both the applicant and the city that infrastructure will be available as the site develops over time. Without the planning team recommends approval of the annexation. And a reminder that the commission is a recommending body to city council for this request, and I'll stand for any questions.
Thank you. Next, we'll hear from the applicant. We'll start with five minutes. I don't know. Do we see the applicant online? Yeah, Mr. Wardell, maybe. I see his hand raised on the, just give us a second, Mr. Wardell, while we switch you over. Okay, great. Go ahead, Mr. Wardell. When you unmute, you, please start with your name and address.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jeff Wardell. My address is 251 East Front, Suite 310 here in Boise, and counsel for the applicant. We appreciate your time, and we're sensitive to it because you guys have a really long agenda. We're going to keep this as brief as we can. As Saleen indicated, we are in agreement with, we are in agreement with the staff report. And this site is part of a larger site that we have been working on with planning staff and with Ada County Highway District for over a year. It is property that is within the airport planning area that is contemplated to be industrial, and it has been the subject of significant planning due to the transportation plans that have already been undertaken, which to a certain extent dictate the improvements that will be made and the contributions that we will be making. So as Saleen indicated, it's approximately 120 acres, of which we're asking for 17 acres to be zoned commercially in the southwest corner on what will be south of the extension of Lake Hazel, and 99 acres to the northeast of that that will be zoned for industrial use. This is part of a larger property, as we indicated, and we've been working with staff on how best to address the issues related to this site, and how best to address the future development. Due to the nature of our initial user, that dictated how we have come in. And we do have a significant industrial user that will occupy a significant portion of this site in the northwest. We also will, we also control what is shown as parcel A, which is 40 acres in the northwest corner, and will ultimately be integrated into this site. But due to some issues related to the issues related to the acquisition and decommissioning of an existing compost facility there, we've held off doing that, and we'll be bringing in these 120 acres now. As indicated by Saleen, it is within the airport planning area, it is bounded on the city by three sides, it has a land use designation as industrial, and the M1D and C1 zones that we have proposed are consistent with the land use policies associated with industrial. As we look at the blueprint Boise provisions for the airport planning area, it's important to note that one of the goals is to encourage industrial and airport development on the south, south of the third runway, in conjunction with the extension of Lake Hazel Road. That is what we do, and we will facilitate the extension of Lake Hazel towards Pleasant Valley. There are two property owners, uh, this property owner and the Department of Lands that control those parcels that will make that ultimate connection, and we've been in conversations with everyone, so that everybody understands how and when that extension gets made. Additionally, the airport plan recognizes that even within the industrial area, it's important to have service commercial, and we're utilizing that service commercial as a further buffer to the Seringa Valley Development to the west. Moreover, uh, as indicated, there has been significant and comprehensive studies and evaluations related to the Orchard Street alignment and the Lake Hazel Road alignment. And this application is in further of that, furtherance of that, and is consistent with those plans. So, as we look at the land use elements associated with the industrial use, we have sought to adhere strictly and directly with those, with the type of industrial use located in this location, with the type of uses, and the design and transportation plan that's been proposed. Now, as you know, in 2008, uh, ACHD, the city of Boise, and the other relevant jurisdictions, began the planning exercise that related to the realignment of Orchard Street, and the ultimate realignment and extension of Lake Hazel, as well as the realignment of Gowan. In 2008, uh, this property was identified as an important provider of arterial access. And in the 2009 Southwest Boise Transportation Study that built upon that, this property was identified as an important key to the implementation of the extension of Orchard over to Pleasant Valley, as well as Lake Hazel. Those are things that our client, the applicant, is amenable to continue to work with, and that's why we've been having conversations with all of the agencies and property owners for the better part of a year. Now, we recognize that the transportation plan and the Orchard realignment is, is critical. And that is part of the reason why we have timed this application uh, and put off doing it as ACHD and Boise City finalized the Orchard realignment plan last year. As such, and it recognizes the fact that that realignment is in furtherance of the improvements that have been made, and is in furtherance of the larger planning goals that have occurred in the southwest area. Now, we know there have been comments articulating concerns about, uh, compatibility with adjoining uses, and we would note that the Seringa Valley Project was planned in, in contemplation of this property being industrial, that we recognize the importance of, of providing a buffer. We recognize that the M1 zone provides a variety of, of intensive uses and less intensive uses, and that's why we've proposed C1 southwest are on the southeast quadrant of Orchard and Lake Hazel to provide service commercial in that area. And as you will note, that the Seringa Valley Project contemplated that buffer of the industrial properties to the northeast. So, we are in agreement with the staff report and the conditions of approval. We request your recommendation of approval to the City Council, as the planning for this area has previously been undertaken. Our ongoing traffic plan, uh, at this point, because of the designation of where the collectors and arterials go, really focuses on what are the needs of the users for the internal secondary street location. The land use plan and land use map contemplate this use, and this is the culmination of the transportation planning exercise that's been ongoing in this jurisdiction and in this area for almost 15 years. And with that, I stand for any questions you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Wardle. Um, next I'll call, uh, to see if there's a representative from the South Cole Neighborhood Association. If there's anybody online or in person to represent that neighborhood association. Okay, seeing none, then we'll move to questions from the commission for staff or the applicant.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Finfrock.
Hi, uh, question for staff. So, we've received some public comment regarding water levels and usage, and, um, I know Sue has commented in the packet, as well as, um, I think it was in our report, um, it kind of outlined the water usage, but can you maybe provide a little bit more detail to that, how, how it will affect those subdivisions near this property?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Finfrock, I believe that was the comment related to, um, sewer treatment? Is that correct, or?
Uh, I think it was more along the line of water, I believe there's like a minimum, I have a note here, a minimum of 40 PSI, 15 GM, or GPM, excuse me, fire flow must be provided for non-residential development. Um, and it, I think it pertains to pressure and flows. And I, in the public comment, if I remember correctly, I think they were talking about maybe levels in usage being low in that area. Um, and so they thought that this industrial complex would maybe affect that.
Yeah, thanks for that clarification, Commissioner Finfrock. Um, we, we have not received any comments from Sue as saying otherwise. Um, perhaps the applicant can fill in more details.
Uh, Madam Chair, Commissioner Finfrock, uh, yes, there was in one of the letters from one of the residents up on Hollyland, expressing concerns about their well. Uh, this property is going to be serviced off of Suez's main line that, that has been extended through Lake Hazel. Uh, we are, we are not operating and serving this off of any private well or any domestic well. So, it's going to be, it's going to be Suez's water, and Suez has indicated that there's adequate capacity now. And ultimately, Suez is making a further connection that we will help facilitate with this project, with this property, to further loop that service up over to the east through Gowan. So, uh, understand the concern that was raised by the neighbor, we don't necessarily think it's germane to an application that will be taking service off of the existing Suez system.
Okay, thank you for that.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Schaefer.
Question for staff. Saleen, uh, Mr. Wardle alluded to the, the 40 acre parcel to the northwest, and that was really where my questions lied, it's like, why is this not being included in the application? Um, have you had discussions with them about that parcel? He alluded to planning that's forthcoming on that parcel. Have you had discussions and how that parcel might play into this plan and to the DA?
Commissioner, or Madam Chair, Commissioner Schaefer, certainly. Um, but at this high level, you know, we, we're just talking about annexation this evening. Um, we are requiring the traffic impact study, a more detailed phasing plan, it would include that other parcel. Obviously, they would need to come in with annexation as well. You know, we're not too worried, and ACHD isn't too worried as far as where a new road would go, because it wouldn't, there would be no other access points there, except for maybe minor ones. So, in the grand scheme of things, sure, it would be nice to bring it all in at the same time, but he wasn't required.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Okay, seeing no additional questions, uh, we'll now move to public testimony. Do we have anybody in person that would like to testify on this item? And if you are online and would like to testify, please virtually raise your hand. If you are in person, please come right on up. Okay, seeing no public testimony, um, we will move to rebuttal from the applicant. Um, Mr. Wardle, is there anything you'd like to add, seeing as there was no opposition?
Madam Chair, just to clarify about that 40 acres, uh, we have it under contract, as I indicated, the reason it's not being brought in as part of this application at this time is due to the impact of that existing, uh, compost facility. And we just felt that it wasn't appropriate to include that, as there continue to be issues with the winding of that up. Uh, we certainly have development control over it, and it certainly is part of the long-term plan, and it will come in once, once that compost facility is fully decommissioned. But we can address all of the issues related to access and all of the other concerns without it being annexed, and it will come in at some point, and it will be subject to the, the same type of development requirement issued tonight.
Thank you. Um, great, with that, we will close the public portion of the hearing, and the items before the commission.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Finfrock.
Um, I recommend approval of CAR 21 dash 13, along with the recommended and, uh, recommended and standard conditions of approval.
Great, do we have a second on that motion?
Oh, second.
Uh, greatest second from Commissioner Schaefer. Um, discussion?
Madam Chair.
Yeah, please go ahead.
Yeah, so the property, it's surrounded by land within the city limits, and it just makes sense to include these parcels and, you know, move forward with the plan. Um, I think the, the conditions of approval that are in front of us are in the packet, will ensure that it's done correctly, and, and so, yeah, I think that we just need to, you know, without public comment, it's, um, you know, outside of the letters, I think that this is just a good plan, and, and I'll be, uh, moving for this motion tonight.
Thank you. Okay, if there is no further discussion, um, we have a motion to recommend approval for CAR 21 dash 13 from BVA Development. Will the clerk please call the vote?
Stan.
Aye.
Schaefer.
Aye.
Blanchard.
Aye.
Aye.
Finfrock.
Aye.
Danley.
Aye.
All in favor, motion carries.
Okay, next before us is item number two, this is, uh, PUD 21 dash 15 for Pivot North Architecture, deferred from June 7th, 2021, at 1715 West Idaho Street. This is a conditional use permit for a planned residential development. Um, and we'll hear again from Ms. Cord.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, the next item before you tonight is a PUD for 48 multifamily units located on the corner of 18th and Idaho Street. The building proposed is a three-story, three stories with a range of studio, one-bedroom and two-bedroom units. The ground floor units all have walk-up front doors, and the parking is located in the back of the building, off the alley, um, as well as on-street parking. Overall, the project complies with the development code and Blueprint Boise. The site is located less than a half mile from downtown with a host of amenities and services, and is also located within the West Side Downtown Urban Renewal District, which envisions residential for the site. The applicant is utilizing the housing bonus for this project by providing 15% of the units for a total of eight units, at 30% AMI for households earning less than 100% AMI. This is a term for 30 years. With this offering, the applicant can utilize a density bonus and a parking reduction. The standard density within the R3 zone would be 29 units per acre, and the proposal is for 48 units. The applicant is using, uh, utilizing a 30% parking reduction, 20% from the housing bonus ordinance, and another 10% from the multifamily standards by providing additional bike parking. Included in your packet was several comments, both in support and opposition. The opposition was mainly concerned with three points on, on the screen. Uh, regarding the height of the building, there is no bonus given for height, nor is the applicant asking for any variances. The request is for a 36-foot tall building, well below the 45 feet allowed. The parking is the main concern for the neighborhood. It's important to point out that with the site being located so close to downtown with several transit and bike routes, this is the exact spot where less parking should be accommodated, in order to further support, uh, these different mobility alternatives. Lastly, the lighting, there is a concern with the historic lights proposed, which is required for the area, that, um, that they'll be too bright. This is something that the design review team will review, along with materials and site design. Overall, the planning team is supportive of the project with the included conditions. A motion is needed from the commission tonight, and a reminder that you are the final decision maker for this PUD. Thanks.
Thank you, uh, next we'll move to hear from the applicant. Do we, oh, great.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Shellen Rodriguez, for the record. I'm, um, with SMR Development, the owner, soon-to-be owner and developer of the site. Uh, 520 West Idaho is, uh, my address. I'm here in Boise. So, I wanted to introduce quickly the project, I know you guys have a very full schedule and agenda for this evening, so I will move quickly, and I will speak fast, and I'm happy to take any questions that you may have afterwards. Um, first, you see the same image, image that staff showed, thank you staff for the, uh, comprehensive um, report, and we do agree with the conditions of approval that are in front of you today. So, SMR is locally based, DeChase Mixxus is my partner, also locally based, Edlin Company has an office in Ketchum, and we're working with Pivot North, Brian Wenzel's online, um, to help me out with the hard questions, but he's really the brains behind the design, and has done a phenomenal job, I think, um, creating a project that will add to this neighborhood. Next slide, please. So, really quick, Saleen mentioned it in her report, but this is 1715 West Idaho, it's in the West Downtown Neighborhood Association, it's an infill site, you see it in the middle of your screen, surrounded by R3, it's zoned R3, it's surrounded by R3 to the north, commercial to the south and west, PC to the south, an additional commercial office, and residential to the east. Next slide. So, as you can see from this slide and the previous one, it's about a .7 acre site. It's currently got a dilapidated single-family home with an old basketball court, and, um, it's hard to see in the image, but there's a church, a parking lot, a surface parking lot to the far west of the site. The site is within a five-minute walk to Albertson's, Wright-Aide, Fairview Park, schools, and downtown Boise, one of the largest employment centers in the state. So, it is close to work, it is close to play, it is close to all sorts of different amenities and social services that are needed. Next slide, please. So, really quick, again, all of this was in the report, I know you are familiar, but, um, this is a public-private partnership, the primary site that we're looking at is owned by CCDC, the Urban Renewal Development, Urban Renewal Agency. This team, um, won the ability to negotiate with them to get the site, based on the project that you're seeing today. 48 units, 38 parking spaces, 26 of which are onsite loaded through the alley. The other 13 are, um, on-street parking. We're meeting the current code, including the housing bonus ordinance that was passed earlier this year, and we're meeting the goals and principles in, uh, Blueprint Boise. Essentially, because of our partnership, both with CCDC and using the housing bonus ordinance, we have two sets of affordability covenants, I won't go into a ton of details, besides that this project will serve 100% AMI folks and below, exceed 120%. Really, that's a couple that's making between $36,000 and $70,000 a year, so it's workforce housing. We're working with Catch, which is a nonprofit organization dedicated to ending family homelessness. My development team and I thought this was an important asset for us, we, we're not doing this because we're required to do this, we're doing this because we want to do this, which is making sure that we market to those families who have rental subsidies associated with either Catch or project-based vouchers. The request is for a conditional use permit for multifamily, um, apartments on multifamily zone. Next slide, please. So, parking, it's a very big and very important issue, and so I'm not going to gloss over it, um, as much as I want you to understand that as developers, we need people to want to move into these apartments, we own them, we need people to pay their rents and move in. So, in looking at this site, we looked at our other assets in the neighborhood, including the Gibson here in downtown that my partner owns, and other projects that I've been involved with, like the water cooler, and looked at the ratio of units to parking. Um, so as you can see on the chart, I don't, um, have a pointer, but the red is, .79 is what our space, parking space per unit is, and those adjacent, or those comparable, um, apartments, I would say, are in the same realm generally of the parking ratio. So, we feel confident that we're meeting the marketability for, um, this area. In addition, uh, we're having 72 parking spots for bicycles, both onsite covered, as well as um, in the public realm that, um, people can use to secure their bike. We also have like bike services onsite, where you can kind of repair and, um, assist with any kind of bike needs that you have. And there's two transit stops that are currently within a few blocks of the site. Um, based on CCDC's website, there's additional transit improvements that they, coupled with VRT, are making at those two stops, um, increasing service from six buses an hour to 15 buses an hour. So, this is right in the midst of a pretty exciting, um, multimodal transit site, next slide, please. I'll move quickly on this, but at the end of the day, the affordability is very important, because of this density bonus, we will be serving this area that you see in teal, 60 to 120% of the AMI, with all rents averaging 100% AMI. Next slide. This slide, I'm not going to read everything on it, I think everything, um, here is in Saleen's report. We looked very closely at Blueprint Boise, we looked very closely at the code, we are meeting principles, that are throughout the city for Blueprint, as well as in downtown, in regards to housing, workforce housing, amenities, pedestrian in regards to housing, workforce housing, amenities, pedestrian corridors and street access, as well as creating a downtown neighborhood with a diversity of housing choices that are close to working areas and amenities, a bike-friendly neighborhood. And then lastly, the one, the goal at the very bottom is redevelopment, which I just think it's very important to remember that this site is a dilapidated, single-family home that hasn't been utilized in quite some time. An old, an old basketball court, I think, and then a surface parking lot. Really quick on materials. I know this will be in front of design review staff later this week, but it's durable. We designed it with articulation to try to consider the neighborhood, consider the single-family homes that are in the area. We used high-quality materials that will withstand the test of time. Where this is a lead, this will be a lead qualified building. So these are durable materials that have some recycled content and great landscaping, I would say, water-wise, as well as having sort of an open space on that corner that can draw in community programming, as well as just an opportunity for neighbors to meet and greet. That's all I have. Thanks for your time.
Thanks, Shellen. Next, we'll ask for the representative from the West Downtown Neighborhood Association. Do we have somebody present? Thank you. Please start with your name and address and you'll have up to 10 minutes.
I have a slide presentation. Oh, is it up? Oh, okay.
You can maybe see, is there a screen?
Oh, I see it here. Okay, sorry about that. Kelly Tag, 1820 West Jefferson Street. And I am here to represent the West Downtown Neighborhood Association. I'm the current president. Next slide, please. So I just, I know you're all probably pretty familiar with the Neighborhood Association, but we haven't testified in front of people for a while. So just a few reminders that we are originally known as the McCarty Edition. I wanted to highlight some of the things that we did to keep our neighborhood busy during the quarantine. We had a poetry month where we did chalk art. You could see that they said things to do when you're out of quarantine. We also hosted a dance party where we had a mobile DJ come in on the back of a truck and we had about 75 people out in front of their homes, dancing and so forth for about 45 minutes or so. And then we had an outdoor picnic, kind of alla fresco, everybody in their own yard. So it is a very active, involved and engaged neighborhood and a really pleasant place to live because of that. We're a mixture of residences, small businesses, apartments, offices. We now have a new police, the downtown police station in our neighborhood, as well as the new Pathways House. So we have, and sushi joy. I mean, we have a little bit of everything. So next slide, please. And we still, despite COVID, managed to have regular quarterly meetings, mostly through Zoom. When the weather was appropriate, we would do it outside socially distanced. We have an active neighborhood watch. We're going to be participating in National Night Out this year. Some of the things that we've, initiatives that we recently completed was our master plan. It was actually put into place and ratified by City Council in December. We also were successful in part of the efforts to do the PC rezoning along State Street as well as Main. And we're looking at potentially rezoning a few blocks within our neighborhood that are now currently C2 that we would like to see something that would be more appropriate to a residential neighborhood as opposed to a commercial. So next slide, please. So we had a few meetings and a lot of discussion about this project. And as you can see, the opinions are very, quite a bit in our neighborhood. It's, we decided to do a survey to give as many people an opportunity to share their thoughts online, those people that were not able to attend Zoom meetings and so forth. And we also wanted something that was quantifiable. We were having a lot of dialogue, but we wanted to have some real specific information. We are indeed the smallest neighborhood association. Even with that, we had 50 responses, 38 of which we were able to validate were people within the neighborhood, whether they were homeowners, most of them were homeowners. There were some property owners and renters that also answered. As you can see, we had 45% that were either somewhat in support or, you know, thought it was a great project. 11% were quite sure they wanted more information and 42% were either hesitant about the project or opposed. And so, next slide. And so primarily, as I mentioned before, parking was the thing that caused the most concern for the neighbors. You know, there was someone who sent a letter in from our Neighborhood Association. He actually, I know the individual, and though I agree with a lot what's in the letter, one thing I want to argue is that he mentioned that he never experienced trouble with parking, but he also lived adjacent to the empty lot that's known as the Salvation Army Lot on 19th and Idaho, or excuse me, Bannock. That's a city block that's currently undeveloped that most likely will be developed with a high-density project, probably something similar to this. And so there's, there's just a lot of anxiety in the neighborhood. We were having a real trouble with parking until we went to residential because we have downtown employees that would park in our neighborhood and then walk to our jobs down, their jobs downtown as opposed to paying for parking. The density of the project, you know, as Shellen talked about, it would have been limited to 29 units prior to the housing bonus. So now we're up to 48. And so, you know, it's, it's a lot, a large structure across the street from single-family homes, single-story homes. And when we wrote our neighborhood plan, you know, something more like 29 units, everybody felt a little more comfortable about that. 48 seemed large. There's talk about, because of a lot of new neighbors, the noise, the other thing was the lights. And then there were some concerns expressed about the trees, the landscapings and some general aesthetics of the building. So, next slide. And then, so we talked about and we tried to brainstorm some ideas or get some solutions from the neighbors when some things that maybe would help them address some of these problems. One of the things that they would really like to see, and it is an action item in our neighborhood plan, is improving the corner of 16th and Main. That is a very difficult corner for pedestrians and bikes to negotiate, someone by the cabana. That odd corner there, that intersection. And so walking through as a pedestrian and then crossing to get to the other side to get on the eastbound buses and transit and so forth, it's, it's very difficult for pedestrians to do that. Michelle mentioned they are, CCDC is working on upgrading the existing bus stops. So that was something that, that the neighbors were concerned about was being able to, you know, have access to, you know, better transit, better bus stops and so forth. So that's a positive that thing that's happening in the neighborhood. And we're looking at others, some other traffic control methods that we're going to be pursuing with ACHD, maybe reconfiguring some of the parking spaces that are on the street, similar to what was done at the Capitol. So we're working on that, trying to increase, you know, some of the parking spaces. And then the other thing that came up is the, having the dark sky lights. A portion of our neighborhood is within that historic district that has the historic-style lights. They're really attractive, but extremely bright. Recently, on Fairview, and I included a picture in front of the new police station, they have the downward lights with the nightshades on them. So we can consider something like that for, for that block as opposed to the brighter lights. That was something else that came up quite a bit. And that's everything I had to share.
Thank you. Great. Do we have questions for the commission, for the Neighborhood Association or for staff from the commission? Applicant. Any questions from the commission?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Finfrock.
A question for staff. So in the ACHD report, it was recommended that staff not count the on-street parking stalls as part of the required parking. And I, I believe that's exactly what we did. And so I was just wondering if you could comment or go into more details about that.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Finfrock, that is a standard comment from ACHD. Essentially, what they're, they're pointing out is that it is public right-of-way and if at any time the right-of-way needs to be widened or improved, that parking could essentially just be gone. This neighborhood, this location, we don't ever envision Idaho or 18th or 17th becoming four lanes. There will most likely always be on-street parking just due to the historic nature of the area.
Thank you.
I'll just give my commissioners one more minute to gather their thoughts before we move on if there are no other questions. Okay, um, with that, then we will move on to public testimony. If you are online and would like to testify on this item, please virtually raise your hand. If you're in person and would like to testify, please come right on up to the mic. We'll start, we'll start with the people in-house here. Please start with your name and address, sir, and you'll have three minutes.
Commissioners, thank you for your time. My name is Brian Ringer. I live at 1722 West Idaho, which is across the street from the proposed project. I have lived there for 46 years. And I, and I don't want to be one of these people that says not in my neighborhood because this site has been in need for development for a long time. Our issue with the current proposal is it's just too big. Too big, too many units with not enough parking. With 48 units and 26 spaces and another 13 on the street on Idaho and 18th Street. Now, I may have just overheard that ACHD isn't going to allow those 13 spots, but the residents used those 13 spots before the pandemic hit. All that street parking was used every day by people that were walking up into downtown and there was very little parking for the residents. I have a concern with the 26 spaces that are in the alley that they will not be assigned spots. So there will be a daily fight for those spots and then all the overflow will flow out onto the street. In all our meetings that we've had with a developer, she's always stated that she wanted to work with the neighborhood, be a good neighbor, fit in with our neighborhood plan, but I don't really see that from this project. And this project has grown, as Shellen talked about. CCDC asked for proposals for 17 units and they received three proposals. Hers was 42 and another that, another two that were 17 units. And with her housing, with the housing bonus, it went from 42 now up to 48. It's been somewhat of a moving target. I, I just, I just don't feel that with the mix of the housing bonus that's in, in this plan, some of the land is owned by CCDC. Some of it is, I believe she has acquired for this project. I don't see this commissioner, this commission turning it down, but I would like you to look, consider it, consider the neighborhood and perhaps ask her to reduce the number of spots that she has. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Is there anybody else in-house here that would like to testify on this item? Okay, then I will move online. We'll start with Andrea Clark Rup. And then Stephanie Day. Andrea, once you unmute, please start with your name and address and you'll have three minutes.
Hi, and thank you very much, Madam Chair and Commissioners. My name is Andrea Rup and my address is 430 East State Street in Eagle. I also own apartments in Boise as well as other locations in the Treasure Valley. I apologize if my moniker says that I'm part of the campaign to end family homelessness. I do chair, I'm a co-chair of that campaign to end family homelessness, but I happen to be pulled over at a rest stop in Kouski traveling today and so I'm not able to change that. I'm not speaking tonight as, on behalf of the campaign, but I am speaking from, as a professional. I have worked in planning and transportation and affordable housing for over 20 years and this project is exactly what we need to work on the housing crisis in the Boise area. We need density in locations that people can walk to their services, can walk to their job. And it's critical that we provide density in areas where people can get to those services and to the workforce in those incomes that are targeted for this project. This project is very unique. It is being done with private funds and with local city resources such as land. And that doesn't happen in Idaho. We don't have the federal resources for affordable housing in our state to continue to build ourselves out of our problem. And in a market where in 2020, we had the highest rate of rental increase and the highest home price appreciation in 2020 in the country, we need projects like this in these locations. And I do, I'm very sympathetic to the parking problem. It is something that we hear as we develop affordable housing throughout the West. And I just would ask the commission to question who is going to live here because this country currently has, for the first time, a rate of people driving and getting their driver's license at an all-time low. People are choosing alternative modes of transportation. They're choosing alternative lifestyles to be able to live where they work and where they can get to services. And so we are not the car-dependent culture that we used to be. And we need to look to the people who will live here and look to parking management and to residents and resident collaboration to be able to have projects like this happen. So I urge you to approve this project. I think it will work towards dealing with our housing crisis in the area and work to serve as an example for future projects and future developments to come forward that are privately funded that helps solve our housing issue. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Rup, and cheers to the city for facilitating such accessible meetings that you can pull over on a road trip to dial in. Next, we'll hear from Stephanie Day. Stephanie, just give us a moment to switch you over to a panelist. And then Stephanie, please unmute when you're ready and start with your name and address. You'll have three minutes.
All right. Thank you so much. My name is Stephanie Day. Sorry, I wasn't sure if my internet was working. My name is Stephanie Day. I live at 3131 West Millad Street in Boise and I work at 503 South Americana Boulevard. And just wanted to really quickly just kind of piggyback off of what Andrea said that emphasized the need for housing and density that we have. I understand that density is not very popular. However, we are growing at an incredible rate and we're never going back to the way things used to be, unfortunately. So just really hoping, kind of like Andrea said, we are seeing a crisis in housing. Like, I'm not entirely sure that the community understands what a crisis we're in right now. In Ada County specifically, we have more families than we've ever had living in cars right now because there's not enough shelter space available. And most of those families have income and could be living in a home if they had a home to live in. And so just kind of wanted to reinforce the, the communication that we are seriously in a very, very difficult spot as a community and it's going to continue to get worse. And anything we can do to try to prevent our community from becoming Seattle, from becoming Portland, from becoming those larger communities that have crises that are so big that there's no way that they can turn them around at that point would be incredibly helpful. So just throwing support to this project and thank you so much for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Day. Okay, so last call then for anybody testifying on this item. If you're online and would like to testify, please virtually raise your hand. Okay, seeing none, then we'll move to rebuttal from the applicant. Ms. Rodriguez, you have up to five minutes. If you'd like, please just start again with your name for the record.
For the record, I'm at Shellen Rodriguez. 520 West Idaho is my office. Not much in regards to rebuttal besides that I want to thank both the neighbors and the Neighborhood Association for having me at a handful of different meetings. There was almost probably 15. One of the pictures that was in her slideshow is actually of our Neighborhood Outreach meeting. So that was kind of fun to see. But I would just say that I think the conditions of approval that are currently on the project work well for us. At the same time, I am excited to be a good neighbor and I'm happy to look, especially at the downlighting. I think that's a really important thing for dark sky, as well as just the folks that will live in our project, as well as the, as the adjacent neighbors. So we're happy to live, or we're happy to work on that with the neighborhood, with design review and with CCDC, who has required us to use the existing streetscape standards. So I just wanted to put that out there. I think we are being reasonable yet flexible and trying to find a feasible project, which is really, really difficult in these times of costs that are incredibly difficult to pin down. I guess the other thing I would say off the cuff is, yes, the total units of the project has been revised over the last nine months since it was originally designed for the response to an RFP. The unit count has changed, but the number of bedrooms hasn't necessarily been as, as different. I'd have to go back to remember because we went through so many different iterations of bedroom counts and it really comes down to how many people can we, how many households can we serve that will work, live and play in the area? And as hard as the change is going to be, I do believe that it is better to, to house more people and less cars.
Thank you. Thank you. Great. With that, I will close the public portion of the hearing and the items before the commission.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Danley.
I make a motion that item number two, PUD 21-15, be approved with the terms and conditions outlined in the staff, staff report.
Second.
Great. We have a second from Commissioner Blanchard. Is there any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Danley.
Slam dunk. That's what I see with this project. And this is a lot of positive things and some of-
And some of those things are, this is as identified, this is a wonderful public-private partnership. I think this shows that our, the density bonus in our code can work as an incentive. It did in this case. Probably can go further. That's what the, the next iteration is probably looking at doing as we speak. I'm going to get to some of the individual things in just a minute. But one of the things identified by the Neighborhood Association, I want to point this out because I think it's very important, not just that you, but everybody here understand this. The identification of a potential improvement to Sixteenth and Main, which is a pedestrian improvement, I would agree with that. The problem is the Ada County Highway District charges impact fees. But you know what? We can't, we can't make that a term on the applicant because it's an off-site improvement. ACHD could, but their legal interpretation as of state code right now as an organization is that they can't collect impact fees per pedestrian and bicycle improvements, only for vehicular and capacity improvements. There's a big problem, right? Because otherwise, there would be something to catch, and maybe that improvement could be made. But it, the current, as it currently stands, we can't. The AMI thing, phenomenal, that's great, we need it. It's build it tomorrow because it's going to be sold out as soon as you start. Transit, right? We know these are on two different transit routes, routes. Walkability, all these things are there. The lighting issue is, is something that is important. It's going to be handled by design review. I think we have a, an applicant that's willing to work on that issue, and I'm excited to see where that ultimately ends up. Last point, parking. There's no constitutional right that we all have a parking stall for every place we want to go. We've, we've identified on-street parking all over the place. That's a public right. That's a public utilization and use. To the east of this project are a number of streets with on-street parking and whose current nearby adjacent uses, sometimes, some of them end at five o'clock. Some of them, you know, so we're going to see a lot of turnover in those parking stalls. I don't have much concern with that, frankly. And I think that's, that's an indication of an urban transition that's occurring. This is on Seventeenth and Eighteenth Street, a handful of blocks from like the core of our capital, the most urban place that we have in the state. So this is unfortunately one of those things that comes along with it. But in all reality, we don't know it's a problem at this point. I don't anticipate it being one. There's lots of stalls that are out there and all of the other things with transit, walkability, et cetera, that are going to come along with it, I think are going to mitigate that problem. So with that, a lot of things, but I will move, or I'll support the motion on the floor.
Great, anything else to add? Commissioner Schaefer.
Madam Chair, thanks. I'll be supporting the motion. I think it's a great project as well. I think it's a win for downtown, the neighborhood, the residents of the city. I think, and for the neighborhood itself. I'm going to second all of Commissioner Danley's comments. I also want to point out too that, you know, this project, I think, is also a win in that they didn't ask for any sort of variance from any code. So they're meeting all the setbacks. They're, they're well below the height maximum for the zone. It's appropriate for the zone. I think it's appropriate for the site. So in addition to all the positives that Commissioner Danley pointed out, I just wanted to go on record and point out too that they found a great way to make this project work and, and fit, I think, in the code and in the site. And I'm strongly in favor of the project.
All right. Great, we have a motion to approve PUD twenty-one dash fifteen for Pivot North Architecture at seventeen fifteen West Idaho Street. Will the clerk please call the vote? Hi.
Schaefer.
Hi.
Blanchard.
Hi.
Moore.
Hi.
Infra.
Hi.
Danley.
Hi.
All in favor, motion carries.
Okay, the next item up is item number three. This is CUP twenty-one dash fifteen for Technology Associates EC Inc., deferred from June seventh, twenty twenty-one at forty North O'Wahy Street. This is a conditional use permit for a thirty-five-foot-tall wireless communication facility. We'll start with staff. Please go ahead, Mr. Holmes.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the commission. Before use a conditional use permit for a wireless communication facility located in the public right-of-way at forty North O'Wahy Street in an R one C zone. So we're up here on the depot bench area in a residential neighborhood where O'Wahy Street's dead ends at a canal and the railroad line. So the proposed facility shown here, as a red dot there, is very similar to the microcell poles you see popping up collated, co-located on streetlights and utility poles. So in this case, there are no co-location opportunities, which I'll cover in my next slide. And so as such, it falls under the definition of a standalone monopole under the height limit of the zone, which is thirty-five feet in this case. As a result, a conditional use permit is required. The proposed location shown in red is fifteen feet from the nearest property line and a little over fifty feet from the nearest home, which does meet the requirements of code. So as I mentioned, with these new standalone monopoles, the applicant is required to show that there are no co-location opportunities in the area. So as shown here, you can see there's at least eight utility poles in the area that theoretically could host a facility such as this. Fortunately, the, unfortunately, the majority of these circled in blue are used to carry primary power lines or are within ten feet of such lines. And Idaho Power has specifically not allowed these, these to be used for these types of facilities. Pole F, circled in red on the right, is in the railroad right-of-way. And then pole G there at the very bottom would require the complete removal of a very nice, maturey evergreen tree that's growing in a homeowner's front yard. The planning team has surveyed the area and is in agreement with the applicant that no suitable co-location opportunities do exist. Based on the information provided, the planning team does find that the proposal meets the approval criteria of a conditional use permit and the specific design criteria for wireless communication facilities. All commenting agencies have approved of the application, and no public opposition has been received. As such, we are recommending approval of the CUP with the conditions included in your project report. And just as a reminder, the commission does make the final decision on these.
Thank you. Next, we'll hear from the applicant, Ms. Knope, I think, please come on up. Please start with your name and address, and I will start with five minutes, if that's okay.
Thank you. My name is Jody Knope, seven eight nine six South Highland Drive, Suite two hundred, Cottonwood Heights, Utah, eight four one two one. And share my screen. All right. Again, my name is Jody Knope. I'm a project manager for Verizon Wireless, or I'm sorry, project manager for Technology Associates, and I will be presenting the project details on behalf of Verizon Wireless. This project is proposing to install a small cell integrated pole in the public right-of-way just south of the intersection of North O'Wahy Street and West Kipling Road. I'm sorry, let me get into. Sorry, my apologies. There we go. Let's talk about a small cell. A small cell is just like the name implies. It's a small cell site. These small sites service a smaller area and also complement the larger cell towers by helping enhance coverage and offload capacity in areas with high demand. Capacity is best described when you see full bars on your device, drop calls, have trouble making calls, and/or have slow internet and app connections. This is an indication that the outlined facilities are being overloaded by users, and these small cells are intended to help with that. This particular project will also introduce new technology as well as enhance the capacity throughout the area. Our process to find a proposed site location starts with a search area, which is within the dashed yellow circle. Again, these small sites service a limited area, so it's important to stay within or as close to the searching as possible to provide the required service to the intended region. To give you an idea of the general location, here we have a zoomed-out view. Latos Street running north-south on the left side of your screen, and you can see the edge of Ann Morrison Park to the right. The facility is proposed to be located just north of the Union Pacific Railroad and Electric Light Switch Canal, which is directly in the center of the map where the yellow star is. So this closer view shows everything shaded in blue as private property, and the clear areas are public right-of-way. As you can see, North O'Wahy Street dead ends at the irrigation canal. And this area, aside from irrigation-related use, is unused and undeveloped. So to demonstrate the need for this facility, this propagation study shows the coverage area currently. As you can see, there is no 5G coverage. This next map shows the approximate coverage area after the proposed site is installed. As you can see by the green, yellow, and gray shading, the site will provide needed coverage to a portion of the neighborhood. Again, keep in mind, this is a small site, which is intended to provide coverage to limit, a limited geographic area, and also help with capacity by offloading the nearby larger towers. So why this location? There are numerous factors that go into site selection, and Verizon Wireless has built relationships with multiple city, county, and state entities to utilize their poles for co-location opportunities. Collectively, they have come up with siting guidelines that regulate what types of poles can be used, what equipment can be placed on those poles, and where those poles are allowed to be located. Each site goes through a rigorous search process, and our number one priority is to co-locate on existing infrastructure within the public right-of-way that also meets the siting guidelines and requirements. For this project, we've thoroughly explored the surrounding area for any and all co-location options, none of which were viable per the siting guidelines. Those options included power and utility poles, streetlights, and traffic signals. The proposed location at the end of North O'Wahy Street is at least visually obtrusive up against the irrigation canal railroad and in an area with other existing infrastructure, all while still meeting the siting guidelines. We're kind of having some redundancy on the maps, but to give you an idea of the other candidates that were considered in this area, this is a map of the existing city of Boise streetlights. The lights are indicated by the blue text within the black boxes. Each streetlight was located, each streetlight that was located within the search area as well as the public right-of-way was explored and determined as non-viable candidates using the siting guidelines, which included Idaho Power Regulations, NESC, which is the National Electrical Safety Code Regulations, as well as OSHA Regulations. This map shows the existing Idaho Power utility poles in the area. Again, all utility poles that were deemed co-locatable by Idaho Power within the search area as well as the public right-of-way were considered. A detailed list of each pole and reasons why each was not a viable candidate was submitted with our application. So this brings us back to the proposed location and the need to install a new integrated pole. This drawing provides a picture of the placement, which Mr. Holmes already touched on. So there's a larger view. As you can see, there is existing infrastructure in the area. Here are a couple existing street views. This is a Google Earth view from the intersection looking south. The red arrow indicates the approximate placement of the pole. As you can see, there is not paved and undeveloped, similar to an alley. Here are a couple other images. Just south beyond the road barrier is the irrigation canal, and on the other side of that is the railroad. Installation components. So what will be installed with this project is one integrated metal pole with panel antennas. What we mean by integrated is that all associated equipment will be contained inside the pole. The only other additional items will be ground vaults installed nearby to house power and fiber. So here's a quick drawing. The notes are very small, so the top of the pole is proposed at thirty-five feet. The overall design of the pole has been pre-approved by the city to maintain uniformity with existing infrastructure as well as other carriers. One additional item to note is that Public Works has recommended that this pole not feature a streetlight due to its location in an undeveloped area. So here's a few local examples of what the integrated poles look like. Please keep in mind, these examples do have streetlights on them, but the proposed pole will not. And to conclude, we have provided a thorough and complete application that meets both the Boise Development Code for Wireless Communications Facilities as well as conditional use permit criteria. In addition to exhausting all other potential candidates in the area, we provided detailed information on each to ensure this proposed facility is in compliance with Boise's code and comprehensive goals. We've read and agree with Mr. Holmes's report on recommendation, recommendation for approval, and I'd be happy to stand for any questions the commission might have. And also, there are representatives of Verizon Wireless that have registered for the meeting, and they're available to also answer questions. They do not need to provide public comment.
Thank you. Great, well, before we get to questions, I'll ask if we have a representative from the Depot Bench Neighborhood Association present. Okay, and seeing none, then we'll move to questions from the commission for staff or the applicant.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Danley.
A few questions. One, either for the applicant or for staff. The, the utility pole that you showed in the images that is just the side of the, the proposed site, what was the height of that pole, the existing one?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Danley, I don't have the exact height, but they generally are in the thirty-foot range.
So pretty comparable.
Is relatively comparable, yes.
Okay. Also, to clarify, the proposed utility, proposed pole is to not only provide coverage for the immediate area, but as you stated, and just make sure I'm hearing you correctly, also to increase capacity for the existing poles by offloading some of, some of the signal strength and signal needs from those, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Last question, Madam Chair. And this is for staff. Can you remind us, I'm trying to remember, the, we have, we, we as a city are subject to a, a national Wireless Communication Act. Can you touch on a little bit about that in terms of what we are allowed to do, what we're not allowed to do? I know it's quite a public comprehensive law, I know, but at least some of the high points.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Danley, yeah, I won't, I won't get into the specifics of trying to describe that, that Federal Communications Act. But basically, the, the purview that the city does have is related to design guidelines. So things like height, color, how it fits in with the surrounding neighborhood, some, to some degree, location as well. But those are kind of what we're limited to.
Thank you. Madam Chair.
Commissioner Schaefer.
A question for staff, I think. Kevin, you can correct me. I'm just kind of curious about pole F. So Jim, if I may, let me give you my understanding of that pole. So that pole is in the railroad right-of-way. So there's an existing pole there. Somehow that got there in the railroad right-of-way. Yeah, we can't use it for this facility. Can you walk me through that? Madam Chair, Commissioner Schaefer, I actually can't give you the history on that specific utility pole and how it was placed there. But generally, when dealing with the, any items in railroad right-of-way, the, the answer is usually just no, after we send them multiple faxes and hear nothing back. But and, and to, and I believe actually that pole is used part of, as part of their facilities as well, and may not even be generally just an Idaho power pole. So there may be some additional confusions there. Okay. Madam Chair. Commissioner. The applicant can sound off on that, give me information on that particular pole.
I think Mr. Holmes, he covered it essentially. It is, from what we know of the pole, Idaho Power, it does have a city of Boise light on it. But it, it is in the right-of-way, and again, historically, every time that we've approached the railroad, it's no.
Okay. All right, thanks.
Okay, if there are no further questions, then we'll move to public testimony. Thank you. Don't go too far though, because we'll have you back for rebuttal after that. If you are in-house and would like to testify, please come straight on up to the podium. We can have people queue up. Great, just one. If you're online and would like to testify, please virtually raise your hand. Please start with your name and address, and you'll have three minutes.
Yes, Madam Chair and Commissioners, my name's Vivian Lockery.
Put it down a little bit.
Twenty-two eleven North Nineteenth Street.
Just pull it down a little bit, so you don't have to lean too. There you go.
Vivian Lockery, twenty-two eleven North Nineteenth Street, resident of Boise for twenty-seven years. I'm representing Idahoans for Safe Technology, and I speak from my background as both a public health scientist and medical professional. I attest and affirm that the following statements are true, accurate, and within my personal knowledge. I've had recent conversations with planning and zoning staff regarding, regarding the city code rewrite pertaining to wireless transmission facilities. And I reiterate it here, it's not my intent to suggest that the city prohibit any wireless telecommunications services, service providers' ability to provide reasonable and necessary wireless communication services, nor to discriminate among providers of functionally equivalent services. The deployment of small cell installations can have both positive and negative impacts on our community. Later, after my testimony, we'll also hear from Mr. Hank Allen and Mr. David DeHaas, and they will be differentiating and they will be differentiating much of what Kevin alluded to, the FCC regulations for Title II, which are telecommunications services, those are the phone calls and texting, which we know are highly regulated, and they'll differentiate those from Title I, the information services. Those are lightly regulated, thus allowing governance and management by local authority. Mr. Allen and Mr. DeHaas in their presentations will help you understand and identify what is reasonable and necessary. That's what we're here for. The city of Boise, Boise is, in case others don't know, is currently rewriting the city ordinance. No small undertaking. I really appreciate the collaboration, the coordination, and the community input that's involved with that. It's just huge, involved in the city's commitment to that code rewrite. Most communities have special zoning laws for cell towers, or what they call wireless communications facilities, but not all communities have gotten around to changing their codes to accommodate the small cell antennas that are part of the new 5G network. I'm familiar with several city codes that have been rewritten to provide guidelines that address a gap in service, setbacks ranging from 5 to 1,500 feet, extensive design requirements, distance between antennas, performance bond requirements, radio frequency testing, and more. Now, if the city stance becomes, or is, our hands are tied due to FCC regulations, if that was in fact true, none of the code updates I referred to would have been possible in these municipalities. And at the end of my, my testimony, and I'll submit this, is a list of hyperlinks that will give you examples of those. So in the interest of our local residents, I urge you to deny this application.
Thank you. That's the end of your time.
And allow our city ordinance rewrite to catch up to technology.
We can unfortunately go over the three minutes per our city code. Next, we'll hear from Ms. Noble, Tina Noble. Go ahead and unmute. When you're ready, please start with your name and address, and you'll have three minutes. We, we also, sorry, just for the record, real quick, Tina, before you start, we can't accept any correspondence passed to us after that late correspondence deadline, which I think is Friday. Thank you. Go ahead, Ms. Noble, when you're ready.
My name is Tina Noble. I live at 308 North Atlantic Loop, Boise, 83706. And I would just like to say that most communities have special zoning laws for cell towers, or what they call wireless telecommunications facilities, but not all communities have gotten around to changing their codes to accommodate the small cell antennas that are part of the new 5G network. It has been 55 years since Boise's city ordinance has been updated in its entirety. Numerous city codes have been rewritten to provide guidelines that address what needs to be addressed to gap in service, 500 to 1,500-foot setbacks, extensive design requirements, distance between antennas, performance bond requirements, radio frequency testing, and more. The city of Boise ordinance rewrite is currently underway. No small undertaking with a collaboration, coordination, and community input involved in this process. I urge you to pause the approval of this application until the ordinance rewrite is complete. There is much for city officials and residents to consider for long-term benefits. I have a personal story. My partner died of a brain tumor 16 years ago. He was a mechanical engineer. He was a ham radio operator as adolescent, and there was a ham radio tower at his mentor's home that they spent a lot of time in. He ended up with a grade four glioblastoma in the speech center of his brain. His mentor also ended up with a grade four glioblastoma in the speech center of his brain. Bob, my partner, who was, you know, previously very open to all of this stuff, he did a lot of work for computer companies, and he changed his perspective around those kinds of radio frequencies being dangerous and harmful. And there's just a lot of, you know, it's been 55 years since this Boise city ordinance has been updated. The technology is much younger than that, so it needs to be looked at. And with that, I'll pass.
Thank you, Ms. Noble. Next, we'll hear from Mr. Allen. Hank, please go ahead and unmute when you're ready, and start with your name and address. You'll have three minutes.
Perfect. Hold on one second, I'm sharing my screen. Can you see my screen okay?
Yes.
Perfect. Hank Allen, 687 West Rush Court, Eagle, Idaho. I am here presenting on behalf of Idahoans for Safe Technology. On behalf of Idahoans for Safe Technology, hold on my screen, I gotta move this up. Foundation, we're requesting the city of Boise, planning, zoning, deny this conditional use permit application based on the following. One, hold on a second, my screen, I can't see it with this thing. Give me a second, guys, hold on. I'm having a technical issue here with my mouse. Okay. Should not be taken lightly without careful consideration by city leaders. There was a macro tower that was just recently turned on two months ago, about 650 yards from my house. Within one week of the tower being installed, my beehive was completely decimated. You can see the picture here on the, on the left. Since the tower's been turned on, I've been hospitalized five times in AFib, our local hospital. You can see on the lower photo, each time I'm at AFib, my heart rate jumps to 145 to 160 beats per minute. Like Vivian earlier was talking about, I went to Verizon and looked at their coverage map for this location where the proposed tower is going in. And as you can see, Verizon already has plenty of Title II telecommunications services in place as required by the 96 Telecommunications Act. Also, I went to T-Mobile's website, and they already have ample service for their Title II telecommunications services as required by the Telecommunications Act. Same with AT&amp;T. Here's an AT&amp;T coverage map, and ATT already has Title II telecommunications services as required by the 96 Telecommunications Act. What does this mean? All three carriers offer basic voice telecommunications services to this location. There is no significant gap in coverage to Title II coverage. Therefore, there's no need for additional wireless tower. Existing broadband providers and their coverage map. As you can see here, we already have CenturyLink that provides DSL, Sparklight cable. We have numerous CenturyLink that provides fiber to over 99% of the existing customers in this location in Boise. As you can see here with the coverage map in green, there are about four already broadband providers for this area. So what does this mean? This location already offers superior wire DSL cable and fiber optic wire broadband capacity. There's no need for additional 4G or 5G broadband wireless. In summary, for denial, all three leading wireless carriers have sufficient tower and infrastructure in place to provide basic phone and texting telecommunications services to this location with no significant, significant gap in coverage. In addition, this location is already hardwired for superior broadband information services. Therefore, an additional tower is not needed at this location unless the applicant can prove this tower will be providing Title II services.
Thank you, Ms. Ryan. That's the end of your time. Thank you so much. Next, we'll hear from Callie Wendlin. Please go ahead and unmute when you're ready, Callie, and you have three minutes. Please start with your name and address. Callie, are you there? Looks like you're still muted.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Well, not Callie, but Kelly got, something came up, an emergency with her family, so I've been asked to read her testimony. Can I do that?
Yes, please start with your name and address.
Okay, my name is David DeHaas, 1116 South Vista, Boise, Idaho. Callie's is 3505 West Crescent Rim Drive, Boise, Idaho. Her testimony, I ask that you deny this application for the following reasons. First, I live in this neighborhood, and we have no problem making phone calls and getting text messages. These 5G towers are not for that purpose. These are information services or broadband data. Every home this area has plenty of service from Cable 1 or Sparklight or CenturyLink. This is a superior service and speed, is much safer than these towers. These towers should never be put in our neighborhoods. They are known to decrease property values up to 20%. I have kids, and studies show that these towers radiate power that can penetrate a child's brain. How will this technology be monitored for safety from the wireless providers turning up their power? Will we have tower inspectors? Do you have a tower inspector that has credentials in this area on staff? If not, why not? We have building inspectors, you have restaurant inspectors, electrical and plumbing inspectors. Why doesn't the city have a wireless inspector? The applicant has not provided a real propagation study showing a gap in coverage. The map they showed on the application is no specifications or method to prove a gap in coverage. Further, these tests should be done by an independent third party that is not biased. I have the right to the quiet enjoyment of my private property spraying a high-powered invisible pollution in my home 24 hours a day that I cannot escape is not in line with keeping our neighborhood safe. If Boise is rewriting their code, why don't we halt all installations until the code catches up to the technology? Please deny this application, keep our homes and neighborhoods safe. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll hear from Ann. Thank you. Once you go ahead and unmute there, please start with your name and address, and you'll have three minutes.
My name is Dr. Ann Heike. I'm at 10900 West Wasdell Drive, Boise, Idaho. I am a medical doctor with 40 years' experience in family practice in emergency medicine. I have six questions for planning and zoning tonight. Number one, why does the insurance industry recognize wireless radiation as a leading risk and has placed exclusions in their policies not covering damages by the pathological properties of electromagnetic radiation? Also, telecommunications companies won't stand behind even one tower, but use phony shell companies with no assets to insure their towers. When people sue the telecommunications companies for medical ailments caused by these towers, these companies will declare bankruptcy, and who will pay for that? The city of Boise will. And how many claims until the city of Boise declares bankruptcy? Number two, why have 20,000 peer-reviewed studies, including the recently published U.S. Toxicology Program's 16-year, $30 million study showing statistically significant DNA damage, brain and heart tumors, infertility, and many other diseases? Why has this been ignored by the FCC? Three, why are the FCC radio frequency exposure limits set for the U.S. 100 times higher than countries like Russia, China, Italy, Switzerland, and most of Eastern Europe? Four, why did the World Health Organization signify that wireless radiation is a Group B, possibly carcinogenic to humans category, a group that includes lithiumite and lead? Why are some experts who sat on the committee in 2011 now calling for it to be placed in Group 1 or known carcinogens? Why is such information being ignored by the FCC? Number five, why have more than 220 of the world's leading scientists signed an appeal to the WHO and the UN to protect public health from wireless radiation, and nothing has been done? Number six, as the world embraces the Internet of Things with all devices being connected by electromagnetic waves, there will be a number of pulse signals that will be created by the implementation of 5G technology. Why have the cumulative biological damaging effects of ever-growing numbers of pulse signals riding on the electromagnetic sine waves not been explored? Planning and zoning should immediately consider these questions, as other cities and states have, before considering any establishment of 5G in our area. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Heike. Next, we'll hear from Ms. Cook. Just give us a moment to switch you over. Okay, great. Once you unmute, please start with your name and address, and you'll have three minutes.
Great, thank you. Excuse me. My name is Kathy Cook, and I live at 688 North 29th Street, Boise, Idaho. I'm a certified electromagnetic radiation specialist, and I run a business evaluating radio frequencies throughout the Treasure Valley and the country. In my career as an electromagnetic radiation specialist, I work closely with professional and electrical engineers all over the country. I have reviewed countless WCF applications in many cities and states, and frankly, it is alarming to me, given my experience reviewing these applications, the lack of basic information that is provided in the majority of Boise WCF applications, including CUP 21-00015. Begin with, the technical drawings and elevation submitted in this application are marked as preliminary. In engineering terms, this means that the plans are draft. Any professional engineer looking at these plans would send them back and ask for the finalized versions. No engineer would risk public safety nor their own career in improving a draft. I would expect Boise City employees to do the same. Secondly, the application documents show that a macro tower exists a short .34 miles from the proposed location. And if you know how radio frequency signals work, you will know that 4G radio waves can travel up to 10 miles. So having this macro tower just a short .34 miles away is more than enough power to make a phone call. This has been verified by the neighbors living in the vicinity who have had no problems using their cell phones to make calls and/or send text messages. So based on this fact, it is actually entirely within your legal rights to deny this WCF based on the fact that adequate coverage already exists in this area. Third, in the evaluation drawings that are submitted, it has been outlined that a future antenna will be mounted on the top of the pole. You can't approve an application based on something that's coming in the future, of which no specifications have been provided. That's like approving an application for a new building without any blueprints or ideas of what the building will be. It's important to note that in the world of professional engineering, all new infrastructure applications are reviewed by a professional engineer or by someone with the equivalent training who understands what they are approving. The city has admitted numerous times that they have no one on staff with these qualifications. That would be like me, a radio frequency expert, approving the application of the new St. Luke's building, though I have no expertise in building engineering. There's numerous other shortcomings to this application, but I don't have enough time to address them all. It is important to remind you, Commissioners, planning and zoning staff, and the city attorney, that everyone involved in approving such incomplete applications is agreeing to accept the liability for any issues that may present themselves in the future. For these reasons, I strongly urge you to deny this CUP application. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cook. Again, if there's anybody online that would like to testify, please virtually raise your hand, and I'm assuming that there is nobody left in-house that would like to testify, but if I'm wrong on that, please scoot right on up to the podium. Okay, great. I think we're great. Danielle, you are up. Please start with your name and address, and you'll have three minutes.
Yes, hi, my name is Danielle Strollo. I'm at 3521 Tulare Drive, and I've heard a lot of pretty sensationalist testimony. This, I have to just say, this proposal that I hadn't seen prior to tonight of this cellphone tower is the least intrusive cellphone tower I've ever seen, looks like a streetlight, and the two people who live directly next to it have not spoken and stated any objections. Those are the ones that have the most stake in this outcome. And I will just say that as a resident of the neighborhood, when I sit on my couch, I have bad cellphone reception. And so, I actually, you know, think that we could use a little bit more coverage up here on the Depot Bench. So I support this project, and thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you, Danielle. Next, we'll go to Callie, see if there's a new testimony there. Callie Wendlin, please go ahead and unmute when you're ready, and start with your name and address. Looks like you're still muted.
This, for this, are you talking about me?
I was.
Okay, that's weird. I don't know why I'm appearing as Callie, that's kind of weird. All right, let me share my screen. All right, can you see my screen?
Yes.
Okay, this is what the FCC says about wireless mobile devices versus information services, aka.
Can you start with your name and address?
Yeah, David DeHaas, 1116 South Vista, number 261, Boise, Idaho. Yes. So this is what the FCC already says. This is the debt, what we're talking about broadband versus wireless services. So services regulated by the FCC versus what can be regulated by the city government. Quoting from Judge Millet's ruling in case Mozilla versus the FCC, the 1996 Telecommunication Act created two potential classifications for broadband internet, telecommunications services under Title II of the Act, and information services under Title I. Title II entails common carrier status and triggers an array of statutory restrictions and requirements. Title I, information services are exempted from common carrier status, and hence Title II regulation. Translation, you can regulate the service out of existence. The judge's discussion then continues on to mobile service, showing that the FCC's Restoring Internet Freedom Order classified broadband internet as an information service and mobile broadband as a private mobile service. Therefore, the only wireless service that remains as regular Title II is wireless phone call service. What this means is 5G towers are for Title I. City governments can regulate information services. City governments can completely disallow 5G like they've done in other areas. All three leading wireless carriers have sufficient tower and infrastructure in place to provide basic phone and texting telecommunications service to this location with no significant gap in coverage. In addition, this location is already hardwired for superior broadband information services. Therefore, additional tower is not needed at this location unless the applicant can prove that this tower will be providing Title II services and showing gap in coverage. Here's their maps, plenty of coverage. The applicant has not provided independent propagation study, which means is not shown a gap in coverage for basic cellphone calls. The city's educated staff are giving out electrical permits, inspections as well as plumbing, building inspections. But is there an RF engineer on staff that can read and understand these applications? Apparently not, as this is just a map with no data given, no specification of the tower, no drive test, nothing. A real propagation study would have a drive test with a meter and a phone to be verified by an independent third party or at least someone on staff. Here is the, what they submitted for their application, 5G modeling. Here's what it shows, 5G modeling. That's just Title I services. And it's not mandatory and is exempt from the 1996 Telecommunication Act unless that applicant can prove that there is a need for Title II phone service. It is known that the city of Boise is rewriting their code. It's also known that there's, uh, the cities of Meridian, Garden City of Boise and others are working, group of attorneys are working on writing better code. Prudency would say, let's wait till the code catches up to the technology. Further review shows that no engineer has signed off with a seal on electrical for this tower, further putting our neighborhood at risk. For all these reasons, this application should be denied. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Um, great. I don't see any other hands raised. We did have a handful of other people on the signup list, but it doesn't look like anybody is going to speak. So last call for testimony on this item, number three. Um, okay, and with that, we will move to the rebuttal from the applicant. You'll have five minutes. Um, Jody Knope, uh, for Technology Associates, I would actually at this time like to defer to my Verizon colleagues on the call. We'll start with Kurt and I believe go with, to Melissa next. Is that Curtis Cox? Is that the name? Okay, we'll go ahead and move him over to be analyst. And then the second is Melissa. Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, Curtis, when you're ready, please go ahead and unmute, start with your name and address. Um, and then Melissa, when you start to speak also, please start with your name and address. And if you switch back and forth, just start again with your name for the record. Um, and amongst yourselves total, you will have five minutes. Kurt, are you there?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you. My name is Curtis Cox. I'm, I work for Verizon. I live at 615 East Center Street, Kaysville, Utah. I just wanted to start by saying that the, the concern over the actual, um, EM emissions itself is non-ionizing. Therefore, under the FCC, it is non-harmful. In fact, Verizon, uh, utilizes our towers within a, just a fraction of the maximum that the FCC allows and the FCC actually sets those limits, not, not Verizon. The coverage maps that we previously provided should be sufficient and had previously been accepted by the Planning and Zoning Commission and by the city council. Um, also, um, the city should not be considering RF effects along as the service provider, which is in this case us, complies with the FCC regulations. Um, also, uh, the city should not be imposing moratoriums while rewriting existing code. Again, that the, this is a safe under the FCC and that we do, uh, have a need for the area. Obviously, uh, from the one, uh, person that previously spoke, there are dropped calls in the area or we wouldn't be having a need for a tower. Also, there is a need for existing service from the studies that, that we have done. And that is all I have. I yield the remainder of my time to Melissa Reagan.
Uh, good evening. This is Melissa Reagan. I am an attorney at Sherman and Howard in Denver, Colorado, representing Verizon Wireless. Address is 633 Seventeenth Street, Suite 3000, Denver, um, Colorado. Just to iterate and a couple of points that Mr. Cox made, under the FCC actually issued a fairly detailed order in 2018 and specifically addressing small wireless facilities and the need for the deployment, given all of the technology, um, that especially has come to light in the past year with COVID and working from home, tele, telemedicine services, education, all of those things. First, under that, uh, 2018 FCC order, as Kurt mentioned, um, the, um, cities and jurisdictions are prohibited from issuing a moratorium while considering a proposed code rewrite. So I know that that was a suggestion made by several of the commenters tonight. Second, under the Telecommunications Act of 1996, um, local governments cannot regulate placement of wireless services on the basis of RF admissions to the extent that our facilities comply with the FCC's regulations on those. All of our facilities comply with FCC regulations and RF admissions, otherwise we wouldn't be issued the license for the facilities under, um, the FCC. Um, second, there was a lot of discussion tonight about, um, potential Title I versus Title II and what the law says on that. And there were some case laws cited, so my apologies for getting into the legal nuances here. But they did reference a Mozilla court in which that court actually looked at the 2018 order. Um, and in that court, it actually upheld the most important parts of the 2018 order that brought, um, data facilities under the umbrella of the 1996 Telecommunications Act through the emphasis on commingled services. So providing personal wireless services, which includes voice coverage as well as broadband internet access. Um, and so it, that's really important here because, um, the Federal Telecommunications Act then applies to our facilities that provide voice, data, broadband, or whatever it may be. Um, and under that Telecommunications Act, um, federal law and the FCC preempt, um, local jurisdictions on addressing things such as RF admissions, NEPA regulations, et cetera. The other thing that the 2018 order, FCC order did, which is really important here, is it actually stated that wireless service providers are no longer required to demonstrate a significant gap in coverage. While we've provided our coverage maps, which as Mr. Cox said, the, um, city council and planning and zoning commission have previously accepted and demonstrate the, the need for personal wireless services in this area. The FCC said that coverage gap-based approaches really are incompatible in the world we live in today where the vast majority of wireless builds are going to be designed to add network capacity and take advantage of new technologies rather than, you know, plugging in the gaps that we used to see. Um, and so while we've provided that information and we've demonstrated that, it's really whether or not, not approving this is going to materially inhibit the wireless services that we need to provide, which are span of voice, text, data, broadband. Um, and in this case, we've provided that information. I'm so happy to answer any additional questions, uh, the commission may have. And we recommend the commission approve the wireless application and standby to answer any questions and, um, support the recommendation of staff as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Reagan. Um, so with that, we'll close the public portion of the hearing and the item is before the commission.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Moore.
I move that we approve CUP 21-15 with all the standard and recommended conditions of approval for the reasons stated in the staff report.
Second.
Uh, second from Commissioner Finn Frogg. Do we have discussion? Do you want to start, Commissioner Moore?
Madam Chair. I'll just run through the list. So. Yeah. First, we're really looking at.
First one said. I'm, I'm sorry. Can we mute that person? Great. Sorry, go ahead, Commissioner Moore.
Um, so first half, we're really looking at the design, the whole setbacks, things like that related to zoning code. Federal regulations, that's handled in standard condition number seven. The applicant is not exempted from compliance with all local, state, and federal regulations. So that's handled there. Otherwise, in terms of location, extensively exhausted all existing poles before opting for a new pole in this, this specific location. Um, I think there is a, a comment about a tower inspector, uh, in the staff report. I think there was a comment about, um, or the applicant provided kind of some notes that it will be accessed for maintenance once a month. The plans being preliminary, that's not terribly uncommon. This is, I don't see this as any different than a building getting a CUP and not having a standard architectural set. So I see that as very similar. Uh, and then, other than that, I mean, the gap in coverage, we have extensive kind of commentary on why this poll is necessary and even sport in the, um, in our comprehensive plan as to why this should be put in, um, just to expand on telecommunications facilities throughout the city.
Great. Any further comments?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Finn Frogg.
Um, just to add to what Commissioner Moore said, and she probably kind of already went over this, but the application meets all the requirements of the code. Um, and, uh, you know, adheres to the 15-foot setback, uh, within that R1 zone. And it, it meets all the, all, are all the other necessary setbacks for the code. So I think that what is in front of us today is, does this, you know, uh, meet the code requirement? And I believe it does. So, um, I will be in support of the motion.
Great. I will just lastly add to the group that, um, showed up tonight to testify. We appreciate your input. Um, and I hope that you will coordinate with the city as they work on this code revision. Um, that's really the place to start that kind of conversation. As Commissioner Moore stated, we're just looking at the land use specifically. Um, so now is the time to get involved with that, with the code rewrite. Um, great. And with that, um, uh, will the clerk please call the vote? Oh, I'm sorry. We have a, a motion before us to approve CUP 21-15 for Technology Associates EC Inc. And will the clerk please call the vote?
Stan.
I.
Schaefer.
I.
Blanchard.
I.
Moore.
I.
Infrog.
I.
Stanley.
I.
All in favor, motion carries.
I know. Okay, so, um, moving on to item number four, this is CFH 20-78 for Grant Robb.
Can we take five?
Sure.
Thank you.
We're going to just take a five-minute break and we'll be back at about 10 till.
You didn't bring any podcasts or anything?
How's everything going through these days?
What's that?
How's everything going?
Crazy town. hearings.
Never know about that mic, so.
This is for a car. Yeah. 10B, 5B.
Okay, let's go ahead and get started. Um, we're going to start up here with item number four. This is CFH 20- And we're going to start up here with item number four. This is CFH 20-78 for Grant Robb deferred from June 7th, 2021. At 1211 East Shaw Mountain Road. This is an appeal to the planning director's approval of a hillside permit. So we will start with staff. Please go ahead, Mr. Holmes.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the commission. Like you said, this item before you is an appeal of the planning director's approval of a hillside permit for the grading associated with the construction of a new single family home located at 1211 East Shaw Mountain Road. So shown there in red. So I can be pretty brief with this, as the appellant has informed us that they're not going to be in attendance this evening, so I don't anticipate too much discussion. So as stated in the project report, concerns with drainage were the primary grounds of the appeal. So the planning team and public works did find that these concerns were adequately addressed by the plan to tie the site into the existing ACHD stormwater system shown in that line as blue. So as such, the planning team does not find that the planning director made any errors in their decision to approve the hillside application and is recommending that the commission deny the appeal and uphold the director's decision.
Okay, great. So next we would move to the appellant, which is Mr. Robb, but I am not seeing him here or online. So then we'll move to the applicant, which is Cam Miner. There he is. So give us a moment, please, while we switch you over to panelist. I think Celine, are you able to move him to panelist? Oh, there we go. Thank you. Just delayed. I need the patience with the technology tonight. Mr. Miner, please go ahead and unmute when you're ready. Start with your name and address. And we'll, we'll start with five minutes. Cameron, are you there? Looks like you're still muted. Mr. Miner, do we have you online there? I saw you raise your hand, so I know you're, you're in there somewhere. You are still muted. After a year and a half, you'd think that would be less painful. Somebody doesn't answer on the other side. Mr. Miner, I'm looking for Cameron Miner, calling you to please unmute.
Madam Chair in the chat, he said he can't unmute.
Well, that's limiting. Um, okay, we, can the host unmute him? No. Okay, maybe we can ask him to log out and log back in.
Confirm if he has anything to say. I did speak with him today.
Okay.
There wasn't much to add.
Okay, Mr. Miner, can you maybe just add to the chat if you have nothing to add? Excellent. Thank you. Let the record show that he has nothing to add. Okay, and then next I would be calling for the East End Neighborhood Association representative, but I also don't think we have that here tonight. Okay, seeing none for that. We would go to rebuttals, but since there's not much to rebut at this point. Mr. Miner, would you waive your opportunity? I guess we need public testimony first. Is there anybody present tonight that would like to testify on this item? Please virtually raise your hand if you're online, or just come right on up to the podium if you're here in house. Okay, seeing none. Now we would be moving to rebuttals, but since we're missing an appellant and the applicant has nothing to add, we will leave it at that. And at this point, the item is before the commission and I'll entertain a motion. Let's go with Commissioner Schaefer first.
I move, thank you, Madam Chair. I move to deny the appeal of CFH 20-78.
Do we have a second?
Second.
A second from Commissioner Finfrock. Is there any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Schaefer.
Just real quick. First of all, it's quite frustrating that the appellant is not in attendance this evening. The appellant is driving the very reason that we're speaking on this item tonight. So I'm going to just voice my displeasure and frustration with that fact. Secondarily, in looking through the application, I see no issue with the decisions to date regarding the application. These hillside permits are scrutinized multiple times in their process before a building permit is even issued. So I feel comfortable in the director's decision to approve the application initially. And therefore, I move to deny the appeal.
Is there any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, then we have a, a motion to deny the appeal for CFH 20-78 from Grant Robb at 1211 East Shaw Mountain Road. And will the clerk please call the vote?
Stan.
Aye.
Schaefer.
Aye.
Landry.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
Finfrock.
Aye.
Stanley.
Aye.
All in favor, motion carries.
Okay, moving on to item number six. This is CAR 21-14 for Engineering Solutions LLP, deferred from June 7th, 2021. At 9435 West Overland Road. This is a rezone of 4.2 acres and additionally, this is SUB 21-20 for Box Elder Creek subdivision, also deferred from June 7th, 2021 at 9435 West Overland Road. This is a preliminary plat for residential subdivision comprised of 18 buildable and four common lots. We'll start with staff and please go ahead, Mr. Moser.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the commission. The applicant is requesting a rezone of 4.5 acres located at 9435 West Overland Road from A1 to R1 CDA. The rezone is requested in order to construct the new detached single family subdivision comprised of 18 buildable, four common lots. The proposed R1C zoning will also include a development agreement, which limits the density to 4.2 units an acre or 18 buildable lots. In summary, the rezone is consistent with the conference of plan and all the required findings as per the development code. The site is suburban on the land use map and is surrounded by residential zones and uses to the west, east, and south. As such, the proposed R1C is consistent and compatible with the surrounding neighborhood. In addition, the rezone is compatible with the airport influence area since there is a DA which limits the density as, as to what the airport is requested. The subdivision layout complies with the dimensional standards of the R1C zone in terms of lot size and width. It also provides the required landscaping along Overland Road. In addition, direct vehicle access is prohibited to Overland Road since it's an arterial roadway and only emergency access is allowed. Now, the things that need to be discussed are the, the conditions of approval requiring a pathway to be recorded along the west property line adjacent to the Farmers' lateral canal. The original condition in, approval, condition of approval in the project report would locate this pathway easement in the common lot and, and within the irrigation district easement. However, late correspondence from the Napa Meridian Irrigation District stated that they kept, they have currently concerns with allowing pathway easements in within their irrigation easement. The second issue that would also be talked about today is that the applicant has concerns with constructing the detached, five foot detached, eight foot landscape buffer along Overland Road due to topography and other site constraints. This site plan, you can see kind of where the original pathway was to be proposed. However, the planning team recommends, recommends condition of approval be, number two be changed to the following, which is basically for a five to eight foot multi-use pathway be constructed along the west edge, west edge of the sub, or the subject property adjacent to the irrigation easement, but not in it. So essentially in the buildable lots. And that this, that this pathway easement be placed in a, in a recorded easement. This would allow the pathway to be constructed onsite and moved out of the irrigation easement. However, the applicant has concerns with this proposed new condition since about four of the lots, I think roughly 18 through 20 are not very deep. They roughly, they have width or depths of about 85 to 84 feet. And locating the pathway into the buildable lots would reduce the buildable area of these parcels. As for the year, as for the, the land or the, the requested detached sidewalk along Overland Road, that is generally a standard condition that staff always tries to get, especially along major arterial roadways. We try to get the detached sidewalks with the landscape buffer to better create a more pedestrian environment there. Now, the planning team shows, now the site plan here shows that the pathway and easement will be located on the subject property adjacent to outside of the irrigation easement and the common lot. I would like to note that the Mill Creek subdivision, number one, which is directly adjacent to the west, has a plat note that currently identifies the pathway, currently identifies a pathway easement along the west side of Farmer's lateral. This pathway easement was recorded back in 1994 with the Mill Creek subdivision approval. However, it was never constructed. How, what I would note though is that the pathway, that this easement within the Mill Creek subdivision is still located within the Napa Meridian irrigation easement surrounding the canal and that Napa Meridian Irrigation District still has concerns with allowing pathways within their, within their irrigation easements. And from the planning team perspective, we would like to see that these easements be located, or that these pathway easements be located outside the irrigation easement. That way, they can actually be constructed with the development of the law, or with the development of the subdivision. And, and not, and not be dependent upon conditions from the irrigation easement themselves, or the irrigation district themselves. Also, the Napa Meridian and the irrigation and a number of the irrigation folks have been a little bit difficult in the past to work with and trying to get these pathways built. Being that they have concerns regarding public safety, access to the irrigation for maintenance and things of that nature. So actually trying to get them constructed historically has been difficult within their easements, which might explain why the one in Mill Creek was recorded back in 94 and still has never been constructed. So as such, the planning team is still recommending approval of the project, but with the condition number two being revised as per the late correspondence. Planning team recommends approval of the, of the rezone and the subdivision with revised conditions. And the commission makes recommendation on the rezone and subdivision to council. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moser. Next we'll hear from the applicant. You have a screen right here at the podium. If you want to just make your way on up and you can see at this one here.
Is it up here on this?
He loaded it. It should be under Box Elder Creek.
Is it the?
It's a PowerPoint.
Is it the thumb drive still on the?
Yes.
Okay, so if I can access that.
Please start with your name and address and we'll start with 10 minutes.
Thank you, Madam Chairman, members of the commission. I'm Becky McKay with Engineering Solutions. My business address is 1029 North Rosario in Meridian. I've been a planner in the Treasure Valley for 30 years. Glad to be before the commission. This particular piece of property, one of my clients who I've done other projects in Eagle and other jurisdictions picked up and it's, as staff indicated, it's only about 4.17 acres in size. It's an infill parcel. It's surrounded by single family development. Mill Creek subdivision is to the, to the west and to the south, zoned R1A and R1B. To the east is Coronado subdivision. It's zoned R1C. And then to the north, you have office and commercial development. When I met with Ada County Highway District, they indicated they would not allow any additional curb cuts to Overland Road because it is a major arterial and considered a mobility corridor. Since the property did have a stub street called Surf Street that connects to Coronado, that they asked us to connect to that stub street for the 18 proposed single family lots. The Boise Fire Department had some concerns about that cul-de-sac length. So we did send over a revised drawing to Romeo Gervais showing an emergency vehicle access only out to Overland Road. He did approve that, asking us to coordinate the location, the type of gate, Knox box, et cetera with him. And in our Ada County Highway District report, they did approve that emergency access. Now, Ada County Highway District has asked us to dedicate 22 additional feet of right of way. There is 80 feet total, 40 feet from center line because they anticipate in their staff report, I believe in 2036, that Overland Road will be seven lanes. Now, there is currently a five foot attached walk along that corridor. And you can see it runs both east and west. It's a monopore where they poured the vertical curb and the attached walk. Our property is elevation wise, three feet lower than that existing sidewalk. There is also transmission, Idaho power transmission lines right at the back of walk. We only have 335 feet of frontage. So my question to staff when they ask us about detaching the sidewalk and, and demoing the attached walk that's out there, that that would look very strange since ACHDs ask us if you place any detached walk, it must be 55 feet south of center line. So as you can imagine, you're riding your bike or you're walking down Overland and here is this diversion that drops down. I don't believe we can meet ADA standards and then go 15 feet into the property and then back out again. It, it, it just doesn't seem safe or prudent to me. And when they rebuild that corridor, they will go in and, and probably detach those walks because that's what all of these cities are asking. We did have our neighborhood meeting out at the site. Very, very good neighbors adjacent to us with Coronado subdivision. One of the things that they asked of us, if we would replace their existing wood and dilapidated fencing on the east boundary. Because they said the developer that, that was on their east boundary were on their west. They just stuck up a new fence right next to their fence and they were very upset that they never made any overtures to them. We have agreed that with their consent of their HOA and their president was there and all the neighbors were there, that we will take down their existing fence and we will replace it with a new cedar board fence like they've asked us. They were very kind, very complimentary. They're zoned R1C just like us. I think they're going to be excellent neighbors. This particular property is in the southwest planning area. It's designated suburban, which allows for three to five dwelling units per acre. We're at 4.32. We did get approval from the Boise City Airport. Prior to submitting, we did send a couple of versions to them. And they indicated to us that the properties closer to the airport, to the east of us along Maple Grove corridor have been allowed more dense, density than us. So they said that it was acceptable that their new sound study has reduced those contours where they were restricting the densities at three. We have a diversity of lots in here. Tried to provide kind of a variety with 5,000 up to 7,278 square feet. We meet all the requirements for the R1C. We are not asking for any setback deviations. The public street will be 33 feet back to back with attached walks. One of the struggles we had with this particular property was the stub street and trying to bring that into the project. Right now, what you see is as tight as we can get that curve for that center line radius and still meet Ada County Highway District policy standards. I think it's a good project. It's an infill project. I've always said, you know, I'm, I'm a proponent of infill projects, but typically they're more difficult than a 40 acre project because you're working with existing neighbors and site constraints. When I received my staff report, I did send the condition over to Napa Meridian Irrigation District. Greg Curtis did review it. What Greg Curtis said in his letter that I did send to the staff is that he was surprised to learn that Boise City is requiring an easement within their easement of the Farmer's lateral since there is a master pathway agreement recorded and dated in 2001 and still in effect between the city of Boise and Napa Meridian. Basically, it states that anytime the city wants a pathway along any of their facilities, that they will first go to this, to Napa Meridian. that they will first go to this, to Napa Meridian, negotiate that and not require any particular developers to install or provide for that easement without Napa Meridian therefore approving it. If you continue to the next slide. This shows you the sidewalk. You can see those transmission lines are right at the back of walk. As you can see, that property is dropping down three feet. You can see the gravel and then you can see the, the pasture that's three feet below the existing grade of the sidewalk. So the difficulty in trying to get around those poles, dropping a detached walk, bringing it back, trying to match grade, that is really one of the problems that we face and meeting those ADA standards. If you can go to the next slide, please. Also, you can see there's some vaults in the, in the sidewalk. That also causes some, some issues. We are providing a thirty-five foot landscape buffer along that Overland Road corridor. So there will be ample area win and twenty-two additional feet of right of way for, for expansion of Overland Road. So we are planning for obviously all of the future transportation needs in this area. Next slide, please. What you see there is the Farmer's lateral. We are on the east side or the left-hand side. The right-hand side, when Mill Creek was recorded, they have a condition of approval and it clearly stated that Lot one, block six, Lot one, block nine are hereby designated as pathways, which will be owned by the Mill Creek subdivision number one HOA and shall be operated and maintained by the Boise City Parks Department. Nothing was ever installed. And that's where you have the flat surface next to the Farmer's lateral. On our side, you can see there's significant vegetation that would be disrupted if it were to be on the other side. If you go the next slide, you can see on our side, there's a lot of riparian areas. Obviously, we have a twenty-foot easement. The forty-foot easement is on the west side. The twenty-foot easement is on our side. And Mr. Curtis did not say he would not allow an easement within his easement. He just said he wants the city of Boise to meet with him. And he said, I would be more than happy to discuss the possibility of a pathway. But what we did determine, if you can go to the next slide, please, I got thirty-three seconds. Next slide. The city of Boise, if you look at that blue area, that is the west side of that Farmer's lateral. Boise City owns those areas, those pathways in fee simple. They're all on the west. So it doesn't make any logical sense that there be a pathway on the east. And I only have eighty-four feet foot deep lots. And I've done everything I can to make this project viable and economically feasible. And the more that's piled on it, the less economically viable these infill projects become. So I asked the commission, I will, I asked the commission, I do not object to, I object to condition number two as revised by the staff. I propose to the staff to go with the original condition number two and state a pedestrian access easement, if approved by Napa Meridian Irrigation District, will be delineated on the final plat in common lot twenty-two. That's all I ask.
Thank you.
I, I, other than that, and then I ask that you think about that detached walk because I do think that would be a hazard. May I answer any questions?
Thank you. Before questions, I'll just do a quick call to see if we have anybody present from the Neighborhood Association. This is Southwest Ada County Alliance. Please virtually raise your hand if you're online or come on up if you are here in person. Okay, seeing none, then we'll move on to questions from the commission for staff or for the applicant.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Danley.
This is for both of you. If we were to defer this item to a month from now, would it be possible for the, for everybody to go meet with the canal folks and come to some sort of a conclusion? Because from what I hear, the late correspondence was that they have concerns. Well, what does that mean? And if there's questions with regard to how the deed was all written and all these other things, I'm, I'm questioning, can we get clarity and resolve this before coming back and just not even have to deal with this issue at all? I pose that to either of you.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Danley. The easement, the existing easement is on the west side. That's where the room is for the pathway. That's where the forty-foot easement is. Our side only has a twenty-foot easement. You, the city of Boise owns property in fee simple to the south of that for a pathway that's never been built. So it's like this is, this is almost a redundant request to place a pathway on the east side. And the issue with Napa Meridian is that they just want the city of Boise to talk to them. They're not saying we won't, we, we won't allow it. We're just saying, under the master pathway agreement we have with the city of Boise, it stipulates very clearly that Boise City will talk with Napa Meridian in the event they want to place any pathways next to their facilities. And if a pathway along this Farmer's lateral is critical, you already have an easement on the west side and own land in fee simple. Just as I'm showing, the blue is owned by the city of Boise. That's all on the west side. So why would you want a pathway on the east side? It just doesn't make sense to me from a planning perspective.
You need bridges. It's, it's parallel. I'm guessing that's part of the discussion is that this is a body of water for part of the year and then we therefore we want duality on the other side of the canal. But Mr. Moser, do you have anything to add to my question?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission. I mean, as you know, the, the planning team and through the comprehensive planning are working on a pathways plan. And we, there are a negotiation with Napa Meridian about these type of things. Although I'm not quite privy to the exact conversations that they've been having recently as part of their pathway plans. I did, I have talked to the comprehensive plan, planning department about this. And I guess their concerns is that if you look at the, the master agreement, there's, I think there are conditions in there that talk about any pathway before it gets built has to be, has to meet their standards. And then it has to basically address their concerns regarding access, public safety, maintenance, all these type of things. And then trying to meet all those standards has been difficult for the city and to put the pathway at the same time. So I guess we're just concerned that we have an easement here, but it's just trying to get the easement built in their, that pathway easement built next to the canal in the irrigation easement has been historically difficult. And we admit that yes, the, we do have a connection possibility on the west side. But there's a possibility now we could get something actually built on the east side with the subdivision. And actually, you know, actually in place and it ultimately would connect.
Madam Chair, if I, if I could interject, I disagree.
We're really just looking for an answer to his question, which was about deferral. That's what the question was.
I have so many pathways along Napa Meridian East.
I believe that there's a lot more to be said about this, but we're, at this point, we're looking for questions from the commission and then answers to those questions.
Madam Chair, follow-up.
Commissioner Danley.
Okay. And this is more to Mr. Moser, I suspect. With regard to the detached sidewalk issue on Overland, ACHD is going to expand the roadway at some point from five to seven lanes. When they do that, the balance of the corridor, not just this property, but the rest of the adjacent properties, you know, along the roadway will also be subject to a complete change in the pedestrian realm as well. They're going to be coming in and bulldozing all the existing sidewalks and reconstructing them. My assumption is, is that when that happens, the idea is that at that point in time, those sections will also be detached and it will marry up with what's being requested of the property owner at this point. Is that correct?
Madam Chair, members of the commission, that is correct. I think if we can get the detached now, then they would actually, they would then, when they do the improvements in, I think fifteen years theoretically, then they would put the detached in. That is correct.
Thank you.
Commissioner Schaefer.
I'm going to circle back to the original question. I think we've got our answer, but I thought I would just confirm. Is deferral not an option?
I think maybe to ceiling.
Maybe, maybe asking the applicant first. I mean, if that is, that is out of interest or is it just, do we have an answer that's no from your answer?
He'd prefer it be finalized.
Finalized, okay.
Is what the applicant said.
That is, that is fair.
Defer to my client.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, all I would add is that this, both the rezone and the subdivision are recommendations tonight. And so there'll still be time before city council for them to make the final decision.
Great. Thank you, Selene. Any further questions? Okay, seeing none, then we will move on to the public testimony. Do we have anybody, if anybody's online and would like to testify on this item, please virtually raise your hand. And if we have anybody in person, please come right on up to the podium. Okay, seeing none, and we didn't have any signups in advance. And we would actually now move to rebuttal from the applicant. Would you like to take that five minutes? There wasn't much to rebut, but it sounded like you still have things to say.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the commission. I know you got a long night, so I'll, I'll try to just sum it up. I've done so many projects within, where Napa Meridian had Five Mile Creek, Eight Mile Creek, Ten Mile Creek, the Crease and Lateral. They have always been excellent to work with as far as building pathways, working well with the development community because they understand that the cities desire pathways along those corridors. We link them up with neighborhood parks, regional parks. I've done so many throughout the city of Meridian. I can't even count them. So I, I don't, I, I do disagree that Napa Meridian is, is just saying no. They're just saying, hey, we got an agreement. If, if the Parks Department or the comprehensive planning group wants to sit down with us, we're open to that. They're not saying that that's an impossible task. And I'm not trying to remove the condition. I just wanted it to have, set, put the phrase in there, subject to Napa Meridian approval. If you place the pathway in these lots, I'm going to have seventy-four foot wide or seventy-four foot deep lots. And that leaves me with your twenty-foot setback from back, from edge of right of way and your fifteen-foot rear setback. That leaves me forty-one foot to build a house. You're always telling us, let's get these infill properties, put these projects on mobility corridors, put them on the transit corridors, put them where we have employment centers, where we have activity centers. This particular project meets all that criteria. But when you start layering on additional requirements of building paths and granting easements where we are just fighting for every foot of depth we can. I can't reduce my public street any more than it is and allow parking on both sides. My right of way is forty-seven feet. I think we've got a really good project. Our neighbors like it. And it's not very often that I have an infill project that I don't have a group of neighbors that are kind of upset about it. So it's kind of been a pleasant endeavor. As far as the detached sidewalk, if you want the detached sidewalk, we, we will try to build it up so that we, it will work, but it will look peculiar. And it may get tore out when they rebuild if it doesn't match an elevation because I'll be guessing at what that elevation will be when they rebuild Overland to seven lanes. So all, all I'm doing is I'm looking at it from a logical perspective, from a planning perspective. I've owned an engineering company, planning company for almost twenty years. And so this type of project, like I told the staff, it's easier for me to go and do forty acres than to do four because there are so many hindrances that we deal with. So I would ask the commission to support this. We do have opportunity between now and council to get the city staff to meet with Napa Meridian. We'll be glad to mediate that meeting. But I do feel that the, the course has been set for that pathway to be on the west side from what has transpired since nineteen ninety-four. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, with that, we'll close the public portion of the hearing and the item is now before the commission.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Schaefer.
Okay, I'll go ahead and get us started at least. I'm going to move to recommend approval of CAR twenty-one dash fourteen and approval of S U B twenty-one dash twenty with all of the terms and conditions as written in the staff report.
Second.
We have a second from Commissioner Danley. Is there a discussion? Would you like to start, Commissioner?
Yeah, yeah. We'll pick up the detached sidewalk here in a minute. I'm kind of on the fence on that one, to be perfectly honest with you. Taking a step back, looking at the project as a whole, no problem. Looks great. Think is a great infill opportunity. It's an underutilized lot right now or parcel right now. I think it's a great opportunity for infill. Yeah, so win there. The pathway, I agree that it can be done. Pathways can be done, working with Napa Meridian Irrigation District. Personally, I think that the best place for that pathway is in the common lot now. So on the east side or the west side, let's talk to Napa Meridian Irrigation District and work that out. I don't believe that they should go, the pathway should go on the lots in an easement on the private lots. I think that creates a messy situation for the homeowners. It makes it difficult to build the homes. So my, my personal opinion is that it's, it's a win to put it somewhere within the common lot or on the existing easement on the west side of the canal. So that's my, my two cents there. The detached sidewalk on Overland, I'll be honest. You know, ACHD in twenty thirty-six, who knows, ACHD in twenty fifty, ACHD in twenty thirty, it's anybody's guess, right? Detaching the sidewalk here to me seems a little out of place. When you look at Overland Road from the interstate, you know, going west to Fred Meyer, you know, five mile back direction, the sidewalk's attached. Now, I'm all about connectivity. I'm all about pedestrian safety. I want to see detached sidewalks. I just don't know if this is the right place for that right now. Given the constraints of the site and the grade issue, that's just a secondary problem that can be solved. It can be solved for sure. But it does create an odd situation if you are using that sidewalk. If you're walking down the street, all of a sudden you have to either drop down on a detached sidewalk or they're going to raise up a detached sidewalk that's separated from the curb. So that's my two cents on the sidewalk. I can, I would love to hear some other thoughts from my fellow commissioners on that part. But again, as a whole, I think the project's a win. I think there are some little odds and ends we got to clean up here, but that's where I stand.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Danley.
All right, three points. One, the rezone, no problem with that. I, I support the motion. Makes sense. It's completely surrounded by residential, you know, no brainer there. The detached sidewalk, to me, as a person who works in this arena, build the detached. I'll tell you why. If you build the attached, it's going to get ripped up too. So why not at least try to get the, the, it done right the first time? Overland has some detached sidewalks. I, I know that for a fact. It's not everywhere, granted, but an attached sidewalk on a mobility corridor is the worst thing in the world for a pedestrian. It is unsafe. It is uncomfortable and is underused because of those very factors. So at least we have a running head start. Granted, it's only for a short period of time or short distance, but nevertheless, I'd rather at least have the resources go into an attempt than a guarantee it's going to get ripped out. So that's the, that's the other point. With regard to the pathway, this city is, is Mr. Moser's mentioned, is undergoing right now a plan of action to try to create a pretty significant master pathways plan. And that's to the benefit of not only these residents, but the whole city. Pathways on both sides of a water, a body of water is, is very important. Otherwise, it's, again, it's going to be underused and underconnected. What I am interested in, in is a discussion amongst my commissioners and to the issue of the, of the applicant, however, is given that those lots nearest the southeast are pinned down and fairly shallow, I'll use that word. What I have not heard is the sidewalk connection that's along the street. This is a cul-de-sac. I'm not a big fan of removing sidewalks, but in this sense- I'm not a big fan of removing sidewalks, but in this instance, on one side of the road, I can kind of understand that, because we have a parallel potential for a parallel path. We have a sidewalk on the other side, and we have a cul-de-sac. That would give you your five feet back. That might not solve all of your problems, but at least there's a bit of a compromise potentially there. So I would throw that out as, as an idea to the Commission to discuss, and maybe resolve this and move forward.
I think just to keep the conver, the discussion moving forward, I think it would be interesting to get some perspective on the record for City Council when this goes to them, but we could probably still continue to move things forward if that's the Commission's decision with those, with our thoughts on the record.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Moore.
So I'll, I'll provide my thoughts, I'm supportive of the motion, I think, so two thoughts, I'll start with the detached sidewalk. Yeah, I understand the point, it's meeting accessibility with three feet drop, that's a pretty long grade to accommodate with your required slopes. But without seeing kind of the implications of that on plan, not quite comfortable removing that from the conditions of approval. I would be a lot more comfortable if I could see it in front of me compared to what was there with it as an accessible route. In terms of Commissioner Danley's suggestion, I think that's a viable solution. And again, it's a very similar reasoning, I think it could be a great solution, but I would just need to see it first, and, and maybe that's something to provide City Council as an alternative or something like that. But just being able to compare those two solutions.
Okay, um, and can I just clarify with Commissioner Shafer, as the maker of the motion, did your recommended approval and approval include the revised number two condition of approval that was presented to us during the staff report?
Madam Chair, and my, the intention of my motion was to leave it as written in our staff report.
Okay.
Not from the.
Presentation.
Not, yeah, not from the lay correspondence.
Got it, okay, perfect. Okay, great, well, so before us then is a, is a motion to recommend approval for CAR 21-14, and to approve S U B 21-20. Is there, will the clerk please call the vote?
Aye.
Shafer.
Aye.
Blanchard.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
And Frog.
Aye.
Danley.
Aye.
Along in favor, motion carries.
Okay, moving on to item number eight, this is PUD 21-11 for FS1, deferred from June 7th, at 8211 West Eustick Road, conditional use permit for planned residential development comprised of 40 multifamily units. We'll first hear from staff, and Ms. Rain, please go ahead.
Madam Chair, Members of the Commission, it's nice to see everyone's faces tonight. The item before you is a conditional use permit for a planned residential development comprised of 40 multifamily units on 2.1 acres located at 8211 West Eustick Road, in an R2 medium residential zone. The site is located between Milwaukee and Christine Streets on an undeveloped portion of a lot containing the Cascadia skilled nursing facility. The density maximum in the R2 zone is typically 14.5 units per acre. However, as Milwaukee Street is an arterial and served by VRT Route 7A, the project is eligible for the transit incentive increased density of 20 units per acre, which the proposed 40 units meets. The project also qualifies for the transit-supported development parking reduction as the project is within 1,320 feet of an existing transit line stop. Proposed vehicle and bicycle parking meet the requirements of the code. All vehicular access will be taken from a two-way service drive off Christine Street, a local road, as required by ACHD. The proposal meets the requirements of the Development Code and the standards of the Citywide Design Review Guidelines and Standards. A condition of approval will require cross-access with the adjacent parcel to the north on the east side to provide pedestrian and bicycle connectivity with the transit stop, as well as the Milwaukee Street and Eustick Road bicycle lanes. The planning team has received public testimony from the neighborhood as late correspondence. Concerns include increased traffic and parking on Christine Street, a lack of pedestrian infrastructure near the lot, water pressure, building height, and overall density. Christine is a local road, and even with the projected additional trips, is under the 2,000 trip per day maximum capacity for this type of street classification. As detailed in their report, ACHD provided, or approved the project with no mitigation requirements. Full street improvements along both Christine and Milwaukee are slated for ACHD's five-year plan, and no other agencies have signaled any opposition. The site is designated compact on the land use map and meets the requirements of the density bonus. The buildings meet the height requirements of the zone, and other three-story units exist just across Milwaukee. As such, the planning team proposes no change to the original recommendation. And in conclusion, the proposed development is in compliance with the comprehensive plan. With the recommended conditions of approval, the planning team finds the conditional use application to be consistent with the standards for approval, and as such, the planning team recommends approved with application with conditions.
Thank you, I'm next will hear from the applicant, and that's Paul Hilbig. I see a hand raised there, just give us a moment, Paul, we'll switch you over. Great, okay. Um, Paul, please go ahead and unmute when you're ready, and start with your name and address, and we'll start with five minutes.
Okay, Madam Chair, Commissioners, my name is Paul Hilbig. My address is 2110 West Everest, number 150 in Meridian, 83646. As Crystal just explained, we're proposing to do a 40-unit apartment complex here. It's an infill project at the southwest corner of Milwaukee and Eustick. Do the next slide, please. This shows the more specific location and the existing condition of the property. You can see the fence line to the right of the picture, the, the three-story units across from Milwaukee, and then the skilled nursing facility on the left. You know, we're also behind us on Christine is the Islamic Center and the Fire Department. The skilled nursing facility is under new operations, that's Cascadia, and they've been there for about a year. It's been the same owner for quite some time, and the owner is, is selling the property to raise capital in order to kind of remodel inside and out the skilled nursing facilities that are getting pretty dated. And all the utilities are to the site as well. Next slide, please. So our goal here is to improve this underused, underutilized property with the nice housing project. We've got open space, playgrounds, a pickleball court, shaded areas. We've worked a lot with the various reviewing agencies listed there, they've all approved this project. We've worked hard with Crystal to make sure we are meeting all the PUD standards and Development Code. We have a compact land use designation which anticipates apartments and condominiums. We're a lower density than is allowed, we've adjusted our, our height of the building to be below the allowed height limits as well, and we meet and exceed all the setbacks. And we have about four times more open space than what's required by code. Parking is required at about 57 stalls, not including the, the 10% decrease we're allowed to have. And we are proposing 74 stalls, 24 of those are garages, and then 24 are driveways behind those garages, and then an additional 26, kind of in your standard parking lot area. We've also included motorcycle stalls and all the required bicycle stalls as well. Blueprint Boise has several points that we, we meet on all of them with anticipation of new housing along Eustick and Milwaukee, along with the higher density to transition between the, the residential homes there and the commercial stuff along the major travel corridors. It's an underutilized piece of property, and it's located within the significant new development, redevelopment anticipated zone. So I point all that out, because we worked hard to locate a, a property that we can meet all the code while still trying to do our part to alleviate the, the housing crisis that we're seeing in the area. Next slide, please. So this is the original site plan that we presented at the neighborhood meeting. We got plenty of feedback from that meeting. It, the biggest change is probably, we went from a 120-unit building that was facing south towards the neighbors. That wasn't really met with much joy, and we also didn't have any access to Milwaukee. And we weren't planning on changing the, the fence on the south borderline. And the next slide will show what the changes we made based on the neighborhood impact, input, and agency input as well. You can see where we split the building in half, we've orientated them to each other, so they're facing each other rather than the neighbors, to provide that further privacy. We doubled the size of the playground, we made sure we had sufficient parking. The big issue is on-street parking, which I'll talk about here shortly. And we've agreed to replace the fence with the new vinyl fence, and work with the existing trees that are there that are pretty substantial, to add further privacy on our side of the fence to our neighbors as well. Next slide, please. So the neighbors, as I'm sure you'll hear, have a lot of concerns about traffic. This seems to be an issue for a long time now, and we're just part of that concern. The neighbors feel that it's, it's a narrow street, the existing residents park along the street now, the, the business employees park along the street. And it's a weird hodgepodge of sidewalk where you can't get north to south with a contiguous sidewalk. About on the, I measured at the west side of the street, has about 57% of the street is sidewalk, and the east side is about 40%. But ACHD has in their plan in 2023 to improve the street, sidewalks on both sides, resurface the street, et cetera. I don't think that's soon enough for the neighbors, but that's where ACHD is at right now. We're fully willing to do the improvements now, but ACHD wants us to contribute to their road fund so that they can do it all at the same time. ACHD's trip traffic report, which is based on that trip generation manual, states that we'll have about 218 additional trips per day. If you do the math, that's one additional car every six minutes. And during the peak hour, in the PM peak hour, it's 18 cars, which is about one car every three and a half minutes. And I've heard a lot about the concerns about traffic, I've been out there a lot over the last several months at various days and various times of the day, to see what that's all about. And specifically, I went this morning at 7:05, and just sat where this lower right picture is, which is just at the corner of our property, sat there for an, over an hour, and I counted 11 cars. And not a single time were there more than one car waiting to turn onto Eustick. It wasn't backed up at all. So at least this morning, at seven to eight o'clock this morning, I didn't see, I'd love to live on a street that had that little traffic at that point in time. Next slide, please. So to give a sense of what we're doing on the inside, you know, these are upgraded cabinets, granite countertops, upgraded flooring. You can see the, the bathrooms have nice effects as well. And in the bedrooms, we're doing the wainscoting around, you know, the, the lower two-thirds of the wall, to kind of spice it up a little bit, along with the two-inch blinds. So this isn't entry-level housing, nor is it five-star housing. We're trying to kind of be in the middle point so that we can keep it affordable for our residents. Next slide will show the various floor plans, we've got several. Most of the units are two-bedroom, two-bath, and we have some three-bedroom and some one-bedrooms. Again, trying to, to fit the needs of the market out there, from the working professional to the newer newlyweds, to maybe those that are retired or that want to work from home. So it's not just one product, it's multiple products through our floor plans. The next slide, I believe, shows the exterior, some of the design review requirements talk about making sure it's appealing, which we've got a, you know, our self-interest to make that be the case as well. This is what we've ended up with, to have various elevations to each side of the, the building. It's surrounded by plenty of landscaping, we've got different materials, different colors, modulating facades. The front has a deck, as does the rear, as you'll see on the next slide. And again, those are each pointing towards these new buildings, none of those decks are facing the existing properties. And the, the final slide here shows just another rendering with a different color scheme, so that we're not just all the same on each four of these projects. So just to wrap it up, we, we're not asking for any variances. We agree with all the conditions in the staff report, and we feel like we meet what the planners for the city of Boise envision to go on this property. So with that, I'll stand for questions.
Thank you, great, next we'll move to hear from the Neighborhood Association. Perfect. Ronnie, thank you, please start with your name and address, and you'll have 10 minutes.
Thank you very much. My name is Ronnie Marler, I live at 8781 West Corey Lane, Boise, Idaho. I'm an eight-year-long president of the West Bench Neighborhood Association, and you may not recognize me, because I don't come in front of you often. We've had a history of a lot of infill in our neighborhood. It's a pretty small neighborhood association, pretty small boundaries. But we have been welcoming to many similar size and scope projects in the past. And, and currently, there's like five more going into our neighborhood as we speak that are on the docket for meetings coming up, that we are not opposed to. We are, however, opposed to this one. But first, I want to, to kind of explain how it is that I'm here. Our West Bench Neighborhood Association bylaws require us to have public meetings and to have a vote on, on whether or not I can personally speak on behalf of the Neighborhood Association. We've had those votes, we've had those meetings, and I have been authorized to speak on behalf of the neighbors in, in our association. Along with that, we have a number of neighbors that are here, if you guys could stand up, make yourselves known, anybody that's here for the, for this section of the, at the meeting tonight. I come here with concerns, not only about parking, like I said, we've seen a lot of them in our, in our neighborhood, and the city of Boise and this group has been consistently underestimating the need of parking that these developments bring. Many of the developments in my neighborhood that have gone through the same process have, have, have brought the, the exact fears that the neighbors have been concerned about, about increased on-street parking, reduced safety to pedestrians. All those concerns, they're real, and they keep coming up, because these projects keep going through with these unrealistic ideas of how many cars there are. And that kind of also feeds into the, the idea that because it's on a a, a transportation corridor, that you should get an extra bonus for density. I'm not going to go into the, the idea of, or whether or not I agree or disagree with density bonuses. I understand there's a place for it, and certainly, when you're talking about trying to fill the need of, of housing in, in the city. But I would say that in order to have that be a viable reason to almost, well, go from 30 units to 40 units, increasing the impact on the neighborhood by that large of a percentage, I would think that you would have to really be sure that being next to that corridor is actually going to affect the, the goal that you're after by, by giving that density bonus in the first place. This additional walkway that they're, that they're talking about on the northeast corner of the property that was just recently added since the meeting, and I applaud the developers for listening to the neighborhoods on, on this. But I think it is a, a Band-Aid on a gaping wound. I don't think that dumping people out into the entrance of a parking lot, and then out onto a street with no sidewalks, is, is viable access to a, a bus stop that's on the other side of the street, which we should have to go clear out to, to Eustick to cross legally. of the street, which we should have to go clear out to, to Eustache to cross legally. Um, I think that it's disingenuous to give this project a transit density bonus because of its, uh, being a budding against, against the, uh, the transit corridor because it doesn't really abut against the transit corridor. It butts against a irrigation canal. It's, it's impassable to pedestrians. It's unsafe to expect anybody to use what they've proposed as a, a stopgap measure to, to try to to come to terms with the fact that they don't have the abutment to the transit corridor as, as they are getting the bonus for. So our main complaint is, is the, uh, the additional capacity for the site. We welcome our neighbors. We have on many of projects in the past and we will continue to do so in the future. Um, this one, however, uh, along with the, uh, parking issues on Christine that are already a problem and the, excuse me, the, uh, the, the, the number of parking spaces. We believe that they can make a, a better addition to the neighborhood if it weren't quite as large and we would, we would ask to reconsider the transit density bonus on, on basis that they do not have proper safe access to the transit corridor that is being given as an excuse or a reason to, um, increase the density on, on the project. Uh, basically that's it. There's other people that are going to speak to you tonight and they're going to talk about, uh, a lot of the same stuff and, um, these are the, the, um, the neighbors that are more directly impacted. The people that live on Christine, uh, the people that live in that neighborhood. I might add that just a reminder that right across the street from this, um, on the southeast corner of, uh, Eustache and Milwaukee is another large complex that's come into our neighborhood that we've gone to the public meetings and we welcome them with open arms because they have the, the proper density and we hope, we don't expect, but we hope that, that when they get them all built, that there'll be enough parking uh, and that not become an issue on other nearby streets as it has in other projects in our neighborhood. And with that, um, I'll stand for questions.
Thank you. Um, yes, at this point we will move to questions from the commission for a staff applicant or the Neighborhood Association.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Danley.
I've got a couple of questions. The first one, I, this can actually be for, for Ms. Rain or Mr. Hellbig. Is it, how do I pronounce it? Is that Hellbig? Is that how you pronounce it? Yeah. Okay. When I, when you, when you went over the, the site plan and in our report, there's a very little detail that shows a forty-eight inch, I believe it is, gate access on the, on the proposed pedestrian connection. A gate is to keep people out, right? So why is there a pedestrian connection that links the two streets east to west, but it will essentially prevent it from being used by anyone except for the residents of this project?
Um, am I able to ask that, answer that question now or is that for Crystal?
Go for it.
Okay. Well, originally we, we, uh, wanted a fence around the entire project because for the safety of the kids. Um, I live kind of in between Star and Eagle and, uh, if you recall the news, a few months ago, there was a two-year-old that fell into a, a lake, a pond in Legacy and, uh, passed away. And that was kind of in the middle of when we were planning and discussing this. And there's a canal that runs between us and Milwaukee and we do not want a tragedy to occur. Um, and so the fence was to keep kids in, not to keep people out necessarily. And at the request of the neighbors through Crystal, um, with that same argument is, hey, you're getting the density bonus, but you don't even have access to the transportation corridor. Um, we said, okay, we'll work with the skilled nursing facility and obtain, uh, across access easements. So that gate won't be locked. But it won't also be easily opened by a two-year-old, um, to wander off and, and fall into the canal and not be seen again. So that's the reason why it's a four, a four-foot gate. It's open to everyone. Anyone can come in and out. It's not locked. It's there. And anyone that wants to get to the bus stop on Milwaukee, which is across the street, they can. Or to the other five buses that are on the same, you know, within two thousand feet of this property within walking distance.
Thank you, Mr. Hellbig.
Madam Chair, one more question.
Please.
Okay, so in reading with the, the staff report, fifty-six parking spaces are required. The applicant is proposing fifty-four stalls. The, the, the project, because of the transit access and the overlay is actually subject to a further reduction by ten percent more. So it could actually go down to fifty-one. But the applicant is proposing fifty-four, which again is two less than what is required. So a question to the applicant, you noted, I believe it was five motorcycle stalls in forty units. My question is, is it, is it possible to convert a couple of those or three or three of those or whatever the number is of the motorcycle stalls back to, to vehicular stalls and actually end up meeting the fifty-six requirement from the re, original without the transit overlay?
Um, I guess there's two answers to that question. The first is, um, technically, right, we need fifty-one, fifty-seven. We'd love to, to meet and we feel like we're at seventy-four, actually. Because garages do count as parking, the twenty-four adjacent to the garages count as parking along with the balance of parking stalls. And so the idea was, hey, what if ninety percent of the people don't use their garages to park? And that was another complaint at the neighborhood meeting. Hey, these aren't, this is going to be full of stuff. This isn't going to be full of cars. Okay, fair enough. Um, but it's not going to be a hundred percent of the time. And so we, we did our best and we have room. Um, I mean, we can narrow up those stalls. They're nine and a half feet wide. We're trying to do everything we can to encourage people to park on the street because the neighbors right now park on the street. And there's no more room really to park. The neighbors are killing that. And so we want every incentive for people to park on our property. Nine and a half foot stalls across the board. Garages, tandem, you know, assigned parking to each of those people. So sixty percent of the units are going to have two stalls. Even the one-bedroom units, you know, are included in that count. So we feel that, you know, the seventy-four stalls meets that valid concern of on-street parking um, from our neighbors. Um, to answer your specific question, we, we converted some of the stalls to motorcycle because of the waste management needed a turnaround. And rather than get ridding, getting rid of the stalls altogether and making it more landscape, when we're like, well, maybe we can add some motorcycle stalls so that those motorcycles aren't taking up a full stall themselves.
Thank you.
Okay. So seeing no more questions, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, we will move on to public testimony, but before we do, we did make a promise to address the agenda at nine PM. Um, so I am asking the commission to make a motion to pause the, hearing on item number eight so that we can do that, discuss the agenda.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Schaefer.
I move to pause review of item number eight in order that we can discuss the remaining agenda for this evening.
Excellent. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, second from Commissioner Moore. Um, so next I am, hang on, let me just make sure that I have my notes correct. Um, I am going to ask for a motion to defer items ten, eleven, thirteen, fourteen, and fifteen to the July twelfth, twenty twenty-one hearing.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Finfrock.
Uh, so I move to defer items ten, eleven, twelve, or, or, excuse me, ten, eleven, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen to the July twelfth, two thousand and twenty-one hearing.
Second.
Great. A second from Commissioner Schaefer. Um, will the clerk please call? I realize we didn't actually vote on the first motion. Dang it. Um, so, well, let me revisit the motion to pause uh, the hearing for item number eight. Will the clerk please call the vote on that motion? I.
Schaefer.
I.
Blanchard.
I.
Moore.
I.
Finfrock.
I.
Danley.
I.
All in favor, motion carries.
Thank you. Okay, so then now moving back to the motion, um, to defer items ten, eleven, thirteen, fourteen, and fifteen until July twelfth, twenty twenty-one. Uh, will the clerk please call the vote?
Stan.
I.
Schaefer.
I.
Blanchard.
I.
Moore.
I.
Finfrock.
I.
Danley.
I.
All in favor, motion carries.
Okay, thank you. Before we resume, I just want to also say, this is really unusual for our commission to do this, but there was a hiccup in the public announcement process. That's why we've done that. Otherwise, we really try very hard to stay on track. But so tonight we were hearing two nights' worth of hearings, which is a lot. Okay.
Madam Chair, I might just suggest that we read out the addresses for those items, just in case folks don't know the numbers.
Got it. Okay, so item ten is CAR twenty-one dash sixteen for twenty-six oh-five North Linda Vista Lane and PUD twenty-one dash twelve for twenty-six oh-five North Linda Vista Lane. Um, number eleven is CAA twenty-one dash forty, um, at nine, six, seven, three, West Bennett Drive. Um, number thirteen is CAR twenty-one dash fifteen at one, two, four, eight, one, West Ash Creek Street. Uh, number fourteen is CUP twenty-one dash twenty-four at nineteen oh eight North Eighteenth Street. Um, and then number fifteen is PUD twenty-one dash fourteen at one, twelve, East Boise Avenue. Sorry to make you folks come back. We'll be here too. Um, okay, so then, lastly, I will ask the commission, please, for a motion to resume item number eight with the public testimony.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Schaefer.
So moved to return to item number eight for public testimony.
Second.
Great. We have a second from Commissioner Moore. Um, so this is a motion to reopen, uh, item number eight. Uh, will the, this is PUD twenty-one dash eleven, um, at eighty-two, eleven, West Eustache Road. Will the clerk please call the vote?
Stan.
I.
Schaefer.
I.
Blanchard.
I.
Moore.
I.
Finfrock.
I.
Danley.
I.
All in favor, motion carries.
Okay, here we go again. So, um, anybody that would like, we're done with questions. Thank you, Ms. Rain. Um, we're going to move on to public testimony now. So anybody that is in-house and would like to testify, let's please queue up. Um, and then we'll move to the online testimony. And so if you're here to testify, testify online, please virtually raise your hand and then we'll move to that. Um, do we have anybody in-house that wants to testify on this item? Please start with your name and address and you'll have three minutes.
All right. Uh, my name is David Bear and I live at eighty-three, ten, West Pomona Court in Boise. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to comment. Um, I live in a house that backs up against the parcel being discussed. I've, my family and I have lived there for just under thirty-two years. If you look at the screen there, uh, this is a video comprised of two separate videos, taken on two separate dates, two separate times a day. One is at eight-twenty in the morning. Um, and I believe this one is two-fifteen in the afternoon. And you can see that there's, uh, all sorts of traffic and all sorts of cars, people walking across the street. There's a lady that, uh, pulls out in front of me from the side lot right here. That's, and school buses go down that street and make stops before and after school on the kids. Um, there's several legitimate concerns about this development, but the two that I will have, uh, chance to bring up, uh, one has already been, uh, raised about the multifamily density. You know, if it makes no sense that the, since this parcel is landlocked, it doesn't even get on to Christine that there's this special exemption for the density. Um, it makes no real sense, but the, uh, moving quickly, the one bigger concern is the one of traffic and safety. I've spoken to a lot of neighbors that, um, drive their kids to the local schools because they feel it's unsafe to walk along Christine. Uh, cars routinely park on both sides. Vehicles can't even comfortably pass each other as it's just too narrow. They have to wait and then proceed one at a time. Combine that with the fact that most of it has no sidewalks and is very narrow. It's simply too dangerous and overcrowded as it exists currently. The traffic impact would be severe. Tenant-only access would be from Christine. This means forty to eighty additional cars, potentially multiple times per day up and down Christine from Eustache all the way to Northview. There's no alternate place for them to go. Not long ago, at a zoning meeting regarding allowing the addition of a community hall to the existing Boise Islamic Center, which by the way is located directly across the street from where this one and only traffic lane in and out of this would be. It was determined that the addition somehow miraculously would not add to the existing traffic problem or existing congestion all up and down Christine. Fast forward to now, the community hall isn't even built. And as you can clearly see on the video, there's no way traffic is safe. More traffic is safe or should be allowed really on Christine. So considering the traffic from the Clarity subdivision, Christine Street, the expansion of the Islamic Center and the additional traffic which will accompany that, and all of the employees from across Eustache who daily park on the east side of Christine, this adds up to being a very unsafe and bad idea. So I would respectfully ask that you decline this project, the permission to move forward. If for no other reason, please say no because of the safety concerns and the impracticality of the additional traffic. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bear. If there's anybody else who would like to testify, please come, move up to these front seats. We can keep it moving right along. Start with your name and address and you'll have three minutes.
All right. My name's Deja Crossley and I live at twenty-eight, thirty North Christine Street, Boise, Idaho. Um, I came because the traffic is a huge concern and I have a child with special needs. And I am terrified as he gets bigger, he will not understand the road. And that was one of the things I loved about this address was that he, yeah, he was safe. And I don't know with adding forty to eighty cars onto this road, if my son with Down syndrome will understand roads are dangerous. And right now we have no sidewalks. We, when I drive down the road, there are people walking in the road that I have to go to the other lane to be safe for the pedestrians to walk. Until there is sidewalks, there is no way that this is justified as the only exit for other cars. We need to keep our children safe. We need to keep our families safe. We have people that walk dogs daily. We have people that walk, ride their bikes. We have people that just walk down those roads. And as a driver, it is concerning to me to have them on the road as they walk because as the other gentleman said, the, uh, both sides of the road are cars. And there are times where it's one lane. In the last week, I've had two occasions where I've had to come to a complete stop so that the other car could get through because there's a pedestrian walking and there's only enough room for one car with the pedestrian walking. We, I welcome the housing, but less of it because we need to have it safe for our kids. We need to have it safe for our families to do what we do in that neighborhood, which is live and walk and enjoy life. And with more, that's going to reduce the safety for us. If the sidewalks were put in the summer like they were supposed to have been, maybe this could have been discussion. But they were pushed another three years. What's going to prevent them from pushing again another three years? We've already been pushed once. And as long as I've lived there and I've, um, I was moved into this neighborhood last year. My father has resided in the neighborhood for eleven, twelve years, something like that. And I moved into one of his houses. So it, it's not safe right now. I've, I've been on that road for years and it's never been safe for a ton more traffic to hit it.
Thank you. I might have missed it, but can you just state your name and address for the record?
Uh, Deja Crossley, twenty-eight, thirty North Christine.
Perfect. Thank you. Great. Who's next? Let's just keep things, everybody, let's not leave the podium empty. Pop on up when, when it's empty. Thanks.
Okay, I'm, uh, Mikey Borup, eighty-three, eighty-six, West Pomona Court. And I just barely missed the neighborhood meeting. I just bought a house. I'm the newest neighbor in the neighborhood. And I live in the house that's directly behind the entrance of this proposed development. So one hundred percent of the cars going and coming into that development will drive right past my So 100% of the cars going and coming into that development will drive right past my backyard, where, you know, I'll live with my six kids. Anyways, there's going to be a lot of people talking about, traffic and how it needs to be reduced, and there's too much traffic, and how really this should exit out onto Milwaukee when it doesn't. But I'm really more concerned about the landscaping side of things. Paul had talked about integrating it with the existing trees, but I looked at it and it really doesn't. When I first moved into the neighborhood, immediately, um, somebody tattled on me for not mowing my lawn to the city, and I got a notification in my yard. I hadn't even moved in yet, and I get there. As I move, I was actually getting there with my lawnmower to mow the lawn because it had been a while, and there was a sign in my yard. And I actually welcome it because I want to live in a neighborhood that people care about what it looks like. But if you think that someone doesn't hesitate to tattle on their new neighbor, that they're not going to complain against a, uh, a big development like this, any chance they get, they will. And like rentals, they thrive on, uh, on rumors, like people talk, like this is going to quickly be known as a place that is, the neighbors are difficult to get along with. And, but what the neighbors didn't do is they didn't complain about my backyard because it was out of sight. So I would love to see a taller, more dense privacy screen along that whole thing. I don't want to see it as what it really comes down to. And if they can have something that's tall and dense along that back, um, my back fence, and I don't have to see it, it's going to cut down on noise, it's going to cut down on visual pollution. Right now, what they have is just not adequate. So I recommend denying this until they upgrade their landscaping.
Thank you. Um, who's next? Thank you. Good hustle.
Good evening. I'm Alex Miraglia. I live at 2795 North Camden Place. I'm testifying tonight not against this development in its entirety, but instead to request that the number of units be reduced to the standard for R2 zoning and that the density bonus for transit, uh, not be given to this development. Removing the transit density bonus would allow the developer to build 30 units instead of 40. The primary reason why the transit density bonus should not apply is that there's no direct access for pedestrians or bicyclists from the development to the minor arterial road, which is Milwaukee, uh, which the parcel abuts and is what qualifies this project for that bonus. The reason for this lack of access, as has been discussed, is the existence of an exposed canal running the entire length between the parcel and Milwaukee Street. While the planning department has added a condition, which is the fourth condition in the snapshot packet, requiring a connection from the proposed development to Milwaukee via the parking lot and private road of the property to the north, which is a nursing home, this condition is inadequate. First, because of the land division as part of this development, the two parcels will be owned by two different companies, as Mr. Hilbig already mentioned. The nursing home will have one owner, and the proposed apartment complex will be sold and have another owner. This means that any transit unit, users will have to cross to a different owner's private property to get to the transit options on Milwaukee. And while a cross agreement may be created, what happens if the nursing home decides to redevelop or change that area in the future? This cross agreement is not a good long-term solution. Second, the nursing home parking lot and road are not pedestrian or bicycle friendly. And that's what that gate, that 48-inch gate would open onto, which is a parking lot and private roadway. It's a private roadway for cars and delivery vehicles to enter and exit the nursing home directly off of Milwaukee. And that's where you get the access over the canal. There are no sidewalks within this private area and the nursing home, of the nursing home, and there's no lighting either. That means that transit users, pedestrians, would be required to use a vehicular roadway that is not lighted to get to Milwaukee, which creates a pedestrian safety issue. Moreover, there are currently no sidewalks on the west side of Milwaukee between the development along the nursing home all the way up to Eustick, which means that even using the private roadway workaround, pedestrians would immediately face no sidewalks on their side of Milwaukee. While ACHD does plan to add sidewalks in the future, this is not slated for another four years at least, which is a long time for transit users to go without safe passage along that street. Thus, it is a stretch to apply the city's transit density bonus in good faith to this development. Although this development technically abuts an arterial corridor, there's a permanent easement for the canal separating the development from Milwaukee Street. It is clear that there is no direct access from the proposed development to a transit corridor, and the proposed workaround goes through the unimproved private property meant for cars and delivery vehicles and not pedestrians or bicycles. I request the commission approve this development without the dense transit density, uh, without the density bonus for transit. Thank you.
Great. Is that all we have? Anybody else in-house would like to testify on this item? Okay, um, seeing none, then we'll move to the online testimony. And we'll start with Tom Sonavell, and then, um, Jody Mastas. So Tom, once you're ready, please go ahead and unmute. Um, start with your name and address, and you'll have three minutes.
Hi, my name is Tom Sonavell. I live at 2906 North Camden Place, which is immediately south of the proposed development. The issues that have been brought up as far as the parking, uh, the narrowness of the street, I believe, are really valid. It's simply a safety hazard, uh, for any kind of pedestrians. It can be a safety hazard for drivers. If a police or fire vehicle needed to get up the road at the wrong time, they'd simply be blocked and could not get through. Just find it a very untenable situation. Um, I'm not opposed to the development of the lot. I would agree with those who suggested they be denied the density, uh, addition. If it were a smaller development, I think it would be fine. Uh, but above all, I believe the city needs to get together with ACHD, which I know is asking a lot. But there needs to be a cooperation on there to create a no parking zone from Eustick, uh, south to probably the entrance of the, uh, proposed development. And ACHD is still, again, two years, two and a half years out from doing their widening and their sidewalks. If there's any way the city can work with ACHD to move that timeframe up, uh, it would be wonderful. But I believe that this development in its current size is untenable and is dangerous to the neighborhood. Uh, and I would definitely recommend that it be, it could be approved, but not with, uh, the density agreement. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Um, so next we'll hear from Jody Mastas. Please go ahead and unmute when you're ready, and then start with your name and address. You'll have three minutes.
Okay, my name is Jody Mastas. I live at 2702 North Camden Place. I am in the very last cul-de-sac of the subdivision that backs up to this property. Uh, my major concern is the safety for the children either walking or biking on Christine. I am one of those parents who drives my children to school and picks them up because of the safety and all of the cars parked along Christine. Uh, just for the record, there are five schools within about a mile of this area. You've got on Milwaukee Valley View Elementary School, as well as Capital High School, and then going, um, south towards Northview and Cole. You also have Fairmont Junior High, as well as Morley Nelson Elementary School, and then St. Mark's Catholic School. You also have Fairmont Park. You've got the swimming pool for Fairmont, so that does take a lot of pedestrian traffic, mostly with kids. Uh, like most people said on Christine, there are very few sidewalks on either side. Christine is an older residential neighborhood. A lot of these homes do not have garages. These people park on both sides of the street, so it is very common to have to stop your car to allow another car to pass. Um, it's one thing for us to be in our cars to be able to see that, but these drivers cannot see these kids. Obviously, the increased traffic is a concern for me. We do have three speed bumps. I'm not really concerned as much with the speed as well as just a decrease in the visibility. The gentleman had said that he checked the traffic around 7:05 AM. I would say around 8:30 AM on a school day. Right now, it's summertime. Uh, there is no way to turn left on Eustick because of the traffic, so that is going to back that up on Christine, which is going to put you between the skilled nursing facilities, employees who park along that road, as well as the Islamic Center's parking. I'm also concerned, I'm not sure the technicality, but the water, Capital Water Company does have a flat rate. I don't know if that affects our water pressure or our, excuse me, or our rate, if that's going to go up if we're having, uh, 40 more apartments put in and all sharing that water. So my recommendation is to ask the city council to turn this down or to at least limit the number of units so that people aren't parked on the street, because as we all know, it takes more than one income to rent someplace. So you have multiple adults sharing one property and have multiple cars.
Thank you, Ms. Mastas. Um, next we'll hear from Roger Hodges. Uh, please go ahead and unmute Roger. Start with your name and address, and you'll have three minutes.
Hi, yes, my name is Roger Hodges, and I live at 8567 West Canterbury Drive. Um, it's one of the dead-end streets that are off of Christine, so we are also impacted by this. Um, first off, I'd like to thank the developers for the work that they have done with us, because they have been willing to change their plans. Um, and I appreciate that. Um, however, uh, when I get, get looking at the numbers, the ACHD report said that it's going to add an additional 218 vehicles per day, which is a 21% increase on Christine, and an additional 18 during peak PM hours, which is a 30% increase during the current, uh, ACHD estimates. Um, I think that's just way too much for a single development to be adding to a neighborhood. And as he also mentioned, he went, he looked at the traffic this morning. Uh, I want him to realize that he's looking at traffic when school is not in session, because many parents from these neighborhoods do drive their kids to school because to Valley View Elementary, they do not bus from here. So either the kids walk, ride bikes, or get dropped off by parents. Because of the limited sidewalks and the danger on the road, most parents do not allow their children to simply walk or ride a bike to school. Also, uh, we have the Islamic Center that would be directly across. Uh, the Hillview Methodist Church actually has an alleyway that empties out on the Christine right next to where their entrance will be. Um, and on the opposite end of Christine, there's also another church. So Christine is being, uh, more than, uh, it's being used more than what most side streets are, I would say. As well as you get a number of people during your peak traffic times, they will simply use Christine as a, a cutoff to avoid the lights on Milwaukee. For this reason, I think that until ACHD has actually made the updates that have been promised multiple times, uh, we were originally in the five-year plan to be done in 2018. They pushed us back to the very end of the next year, five plan, five-year plan to be done in 2013. And who knows if it's actually going to be done at that point in time. Um, so for those reasons, the safety and concern and the increase in traffic, I would ask that, as it sits today, that we, that you deny the request. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, okay, I don't see any other hands raised. It's the last call for testimony on this item. Okay, and then, so not seeing any, then we will move on to, uh, the rebuttal from the applicant. You'll go, please state your name again for the record, and you'll have five minutes.
Hey, Madam Chair, Commissioners, my name is Paul Hilbig. My address is 2110 West Everest Lane, number 150 in Meridian. I'd like to say I've tried to reach out to the neighbors. Several have reached back, and we've had good, fluid conversations about, uh, our intents and what their concerns are. I clearly recognize those concerns. They're not, um, unique to this particular property. I faced that same issue on my own home as well. I'd say by about tenfold. So I get it. I would just want to point out that the video that was shown, that was while the Islamic Center was getting out. There were four cars showing up on each of those videos. Three of them were coming out of the Islamic Center. And nothing else. So I recognize that there's a lot of activity there at certain points. That's the case around churches and around schools, and certain things that get out at the same time. So I just would point out that the fact that we are hoping to provide this housing to others won't change the fact that people already have, um, decided to drive their kids to school, and they will continue to drive their kids to school. So whether this project, um, comes to fruition or not, everybody's still driving their kids to school. Everyone's still worried about getting hit by a car. Though no one has said anything about an accident actually ever happening. Yes, we need to be safe. It would be way better to have sidewalks. But I don't think that's means for saying no to this project, simply because it won't change anything. And traffic will go up, but it's one car every three and a half minutes during rush hour traffic. And otherwise, it's less than that during the normal hours of the day. So I wouldn't use that as a basis to make the decision, because it won't, it won't matter one way or another. This isn't going to be safer without us. It's not going to be less safe. It's the same. As far as the density bonus seems to be a talking point. We do, one gentleman mentioned that we don't technically abut Milwaukee. We literally abut Milwaukee. And the fact that there's an easement there doesn't matter at all. We do, qualify for that density bonus as the code is written. If people want to say, well, it doesn't count if there's something in between, we can have that discussion later. But as it stands right now, we have every right to that density bonus, and it was one that the city encouraged us to take. The easement doesn't go away. That's a permanent access easement. One party just can't say, ah, you don't get it anymore. It has to be mutually agreed upon, and there's no incentive for us to get rid of it. We want people to be able to access Milwaukee, currently walk along the canal, and eventually walk along sidewalks once ACHD decides to do that. So we want this to be safe for our own residents as well. We've offered our services to go to ACHD to try to speed things up. ACHD works at their own pace and on their own, um, clock. So we're more than happy to use our efforts to, to do that as well. It's in our own interest as well. We want this to be safe, nice project. And, um, yeah, we appreciate your time in considering it.
Thank you, Mr. Hilbig. Um, so at this point, we will close the public portion of the hearing, and the item is before the commission.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Finn Frapp.
I move to approve PUD 21-11, along with the recommended and standard conditions of approval.
Second.
Great, we have a second from Commissioner Blanchard, and is there discussion?
Yeah, Madam Chair.
Commissioner Finn Frapp, please go ahead.
So, uh, this application meets all the PUD requirements per the code, um, including density parking, um, with the transit overlay and setbacks, um, to address the traffic congestion. You know, ACHD has approved the project, um, and has some future improvements. And as Mr. Hilbig pointed out, I think that, you know, the sidewalks are a concern, but it's at ACHD's discretion, and the applicant, you know, the applicant has really no control over that. Um, so for that reason, I move to approve PUD, or this motion, and, and hopefully, um, they can get some of the improvements that appear to be much needed in that area.
I'm sure.
Commissioner Blanchard.
Yeah, probably just to second all of that. We just, we don't have the ability to, look, all we can do here is, if, if residents have a problem with this thing, um, either violating code or violating the comprehensive plan, then that's what we need to hear, but we just, we simply don't have the leeway to say, well, okay, we'll just not give them the density bonus that they qualify for via code. We just, we just don't have, um, the leeway to do anything. We have a very limited, um, mission here, so. Um, I'm generally not swayed by traffic concerns. I rode my skateboard three and a half miles to school every day when I was in seventh grade. My parents never even thought twice about it. We just seem to get this argument every week that we meet, that, um, I can drive safely in my neighborhood, but no one else can. And, uh, it's just simply not something that we can, that we can act on. So, um, while I appreciate the concerns of the residents, it's just not anything that we can act on.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Stanley.
I'll be supporting the motion, but there's a few things I wanted to add to the discussion. One is sort of a philosophical one, and that is why do we have a transit bonus to begin with? It was mentioned by the Neighborhood Association President, you know, and, and it's a disagreement at this point. But the general philosophy is that if we don't have the density of people in a given area, we're not going to generate the ridership necessary to bolster the transit. So it can be chicken and egg, and I totally understand. So it can be chicken and egg, and I totally understand the discussion there, but that's the intent and the spirit of the code, and that's exactly why the applicant has opted to enact it and use it to their advantage in a sense of getting more units. Two things additional, some things people don't know. ACHD just is getting a pretty significant infusion of sales tax revenue. That's not been out there yet, but it's happening. As you have probably seen in the news, there's a lot of money additional in the coffers. I wouldn't be surprised. I can't obviously guarantee this, but it really wouldn't shock me at all if this Christine project gets moved back up a bit sooner than it was pushed back. Don't hold me to that, but just given the infusion of cash, it wouldn't shock me. One more point, and this one irritates me significantly. Five years ago, the Islamic Center application was in front of this P and Z, and they asked for a waiver for the sidewalk. And they did so because they were trying to do an adaptive reuse project. And the sense was to build those sidewalks was going to be cost prohibitive. This P and Z, and I'll be the first to say this, it was one of my first days, I agreed to that. I really regret that. I really regret that. I hated it at the moment, but I went with it. And here it comes back to roost. So I say that publicly to my fellow P and Z commissioners as a warning that when these things happen, they can come back. Tonight is case proof of that and evidence of it, and it kills me to understand and hear that this is an issue, you know, and it's unfortunate. I am hopeful, however, again, that ACHD will make this right, what should not have been wrong in the first place, and fill these gaps and do it fairly quickly. So some things I thought I would add to the conversation.
Great. Commissioner Shaffer.
Madam Chair, thanks. I'm also going to be supporting the motion. I appreciate all of the input tonight. I would agree that I think that there's, there's an issue on Christine already. And I don't particularly think that this, this project is going to make that situation much worse. It may make it a little bit worse, but it's probably going to make it much worse. So I think that continuing to talk to ACHD and getting the sidewalks built is the best move there. I do want to point out, you know, and I think we've mentioned it, that you know, this applicant is providing dollars into the trust to provide sidewalks on Milwaukee and on Christine abutting his property. So that's included in this, in these conditions. So I think I'd like to encourage everyone to continue to talk to ACHD and to try and get those sidewalks moved up in their priority list. Taking a step back at the end of the project, you know, infills can be tough with the existing neighborhoods, and we've seen it tonight on other projects as well. I think in this case, you know, you're abutting against a commercial project, commercial developments on the north side of the site. So it's another situation where infill, I think, fits pretty well that we're kind of minimizing the impact to other existing homes in the neighborhood. I think the site plan looks pretty good. There's quite a bit of green space. I felt like it fits within that property pretty well. I would like to, I do appreciate the comments about the landscaping, abutting the properties to the south, and I don't think I need to add anything to the motion, the condition. But I would encourage the applicant to look at that buffer again and to provide some more evergreen trees and to improve the buffering on the south side of his property to those neighboring houses. So with that, you know, I will be supporting the motion.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Danley.
Sorry, one more point I want to make. To the folks who came out tonight to testify, first of all, thank you because I know we all, you may not, you might not think so, but I know that we paid attention, we hear you, and definitely weigh your concerns. I'm going to give you something to think about, okay? I'd be, I'd be remiss if I didn't. One of the things I want you to take away from this is be careful what you wish for, okay? And what I say by that is when ACHD goes in on Christine in particular and puts those sidewalks in, be involved in that conversation. Because if it comes with a widening of that roadway, I understand that on its surface, it might sound like, oh, it's going to function better, right? It's gonna, it's, everything's going to be better. We're not going to have to slow down and wait for another car to oppose each other. Be careful what you wish for, because when that happens, all of a sudden, speeds will increase significantly. Right now, it's self-enforcing. You all described it as self-enforcing, right? When you have people parking on both sides, you have to go slow. You have to be mindful. In some cases, you have to come to a stop and actually wait. That actually enforces the point of the pedestrian safety piece of it. I know it sort of sounds counterintuitive, but I just would be remiss if I didn't bring that up, that when those conversations happen, when they start advertising, hey, we want your input. I hope that you remember this night, spread that word and go out and participate and make your street and your neighborhood even better than it is.
Okay, and I, yeah, I think we, I think the commissioners alluded to this, but all the comments on traffic and the parking, I hope that those comments will also be sent to ACHD because that's ultimately the decision maker on those sidewalks and the traffic patterns and things like that. We get the word from them that they approve and support the project, and that's the word that we can use to make our decision. We have to trust them as the deciding body on that part of the puzzle. So I encourage you to just forward that testimony right on to, to their hearing and their commissions. Okay, with that, we have a motion before us to approve PUD twenty-one dash eleven at eighty-two eleven West U six Road. Will the clerk please call the vote?
Ted.
Aye.
Schaefer.
Aye.
Blanchard.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
Finfrock.
Aye.
Danley.
Aye.
All in favor, motion carries.
Okay, moving on to our last item of the night, item number nine, this is CVA twenty-one dash twelve at West, for Westminster, two deferred from June seventh, twenty twenty-one at two four five West Skylark Drive. This is a variance to encroach onto the rear setback of a proposed detached single-family home. And we'll start with staff. Please go ahead, Ms. Rain.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the commission. The next and last item before you is indeed a variance to encroach the rear setback and exceed the maximum retaining wall height in the front setback for the construction of a new single-family home on an undeveloped lot located at two four five Skylark in an R one B single-family residential zone. This parcel is in Hillside and is an original platted lot of the nineteen fifty-five Ridgeview subdivision. The applicant is requesting a variance to encroach the rear setback to fifteen feet where thirty is required for the R one B zone and proposes retaining walls up to five feet in the front setback, which also requires a variance as individual retaining walls may not exceed three feet in height when located within the front setback or clear vision triangle. As detailed in your packets, Public Works grading and hillside comments are in support, sorry, of the requested variances due to the specific topography of the lot, particularly the steep slope adjacent to Skylark. The comments state that the requested walls and a longer driveway approach are necessary to maintain the required fifteen percent slope for the driveway. This configuration situates the home in the rear setback, which Public Works also supports, citing that it will provide stabilization for the oversteepened rear cliff face. The planning team finds the slope and shape of the lot to be a hardship associated with the property, which does justify the granting of the variances. Public testimony received from a neighbor asks about drainage, hillside stability, traffic on Skylark Drive, and retaining walls in the right-of-way. The condition of approval requires the approval of a category two hillside permit to assess grading and drainage plans and vet the integrity of the proposal. Another condition requires a license agreement with ACHD to ensure compliance of the proposed right-of-way work. In conclusion, the applicant's proposal complies with approval criteria for a variance permit and is compatible with adjacent uses and the general neighborhood. As such, the planning team recommends approval of the application with conditions. The commission makes a final decision.
Thank you, Ms. Rain. Next, we'll hear from the applicant. I believe it's Charlie Cooper. Just start with your name and address.
I'm Charlie Cooper.
You want to pull that mic down, so, thanks.
Three seventeen Gorley Street, Boise. We're really just here to answer any questions anybody has for, you know, in case there were neighbors that had questions or concerns, so. Yeah, I mean, you guys went over it, so.
Excellent. Cool. Okay, great. We will get to that. So next, I would, oh, there is no Neighborhood Association. Okay, great. Well, at this point, then, we would move to questions from the commission for staff or the applicant.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Schaefer.
Question for staff. Crystal, I know you've mentioned this. I just want to confirm. Next steps, assuming this moves forward with an approval, they then go for the hillside?
Correct.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, seeing no additional questions, then we'll go to public testimony. Do we have anybody in person or online that would like to testify on this item? If you are online, please virtually raise your hand. Okay, seeing none, then we would move back back. You are not here to testify for this item, correct? Correct. Okay, thanks. I saw movement. I got nervous. Okay, so then we would move back to the applicant for rebuttal of five minutes, but if, you're welcome to waive that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Like I said, we just wanted to answer any questions.
Great, okay. Having waived the rebuttal, we will close the public portion of the hearing and the item is now before the commission. You're welcome to take a seat.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Danley.
I move that item number nine, CVA twenty-one dash twelve, a request for a variance be approved along with the terms and conditions in the staff report.
Second.
Great, we have a second from Commissioner Moore. Is there discussion, Commissioner Danley?
Looks good.
Great. This is why we deferred the other items.
Good to be last.
You get a little loopy.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Moore.
I'll add a little bit on to that. I think using the house as kind of a retaining wall is a really clever use of a really difficult site, so. Great, great design and.
Great.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Schaefer.
Just real quick, too, I think in this case, too, you have a, the topography is such that the excessive setback is really not needed because the property beyond is higher up, right? So you have, you have privacy there, which is what purpose of setbacks are in the first place. So I agree with Commissioner Moore that the building will be the retaining feature. And then the setback is a non-issue because again, the elevation difference between that property to the back.
Cool. Great. Okay, so we have before us a motion to approve CVA twenty-one dash twelve at two four five West Skylark Drive. Will the clerk please call the vote?
Ted.
Aye.
Schaefer.
Aye.
Blanchard.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
Finfrock.
Aye.
Danley.
Aye.
All in favor, motion carries.
Thank you, and with that, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.